Yeah, I don't know.
I wonder if she's picking you up.
Once we.
Call the mic in there.
Once.
Regular city council meeting Tuesday, June 16. Before we open this, due to COVID-19 pandemic emergency, we have to handle our city council meeting different than we usually do because due to the safety of the public and the safety of the staff. Now, I would like to ask our city manager, give us a brief explanation to the public.
Good evening. This meeting of Galt City Council is being conducted by teleconference, video conference in compliance with state and county stay-at-home orders and as allowed by Governor's Executive Order N-29-20, which allows for a deviation of the teleconference rules required by the Brown Act. Members of the public will see council members and city staff who are appearing via remote video telephone connections. City council meetings will only be held by teleconference or video conference until further notice. Today's agenda states that rather than attending in person, residents may submit written comments via email to pubcom@cityofgalt.org. That's P-U-B-C-O-M@cityofgalt.org prior to the council meeting. Any written comments that were received will be read out loud during the city council meeting by the city clerk on the appropriate agenda item, subject to the customary five-minute time limit. We will try to check the email for additional public comments during the meeting, if feasible. We are also trying a new format that allows the public to provide live public comment using the Zoom webinar feature. Members of the public may use the link that is identified on tonight's agenda to enter the webinar as attendees. They should be able to use the raise their hand option in Zoom webinar to let us know if they would like to speak or should do so and should do so when the mayor announces the time for general public comment. We request, as we do at typical in-person city council meetings, that speakers provide their name and address when they are called on to speak and their line is unmuted. Attendees should also see a lower hand feature if they change their mind and do not want to speak. If you do not see these features in the Zoom module you are using, it may be that your software is not up to date or because of another technical issue on the user's end. There will be an opportunity after the staff report for the public to provide comment on the special, on the agenda item as well. Again, attendees via Zoom webinar will need to raise their hand if they wish to provide a comment after a particular agenda item. Thank you.
Thank you, city manager. Tina may have a role call, please.
Vice Mayor Lozano.
Here.
Councilmember Farmer.
Here.
Councilmember Campion.
Here.
Councilmember Lamson.
Here.
Mayor Sandu.
Here. Please rise for silent prayer and for flag salute. And I also ask the city council Lamson can lead us on pledge of allegiance.
Councilmember Lamson.
Thank you, I was doing the silent prayer. I pledge allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you. Tina, can you replay statement, please?
This meeting of the Galt City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel, on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable System. The meeting is closed caption and webcast at www.sacmetrocable.tv. Today's meeting will air Friday, June 19th at 9:00 a.m. and Saturday, June 20th at 9:00 a.m. A DVD copy is available for checkout from any library branch.
Thank you. Next agenda item B, council, any agenda item approval, addition, or deletion. Thank you. Next agenda item C, presentations. We have a full presentation. First presentation, subject called Youth Commission Annual Report to City Council.
If you can just let me get back to the panelists here in just one second. I'll let them. I've let John in, Caroline in, and Ashley is coming in. So, Galt Youth Commission, you are available to speak.
All right, go ahead.
Okay. Good afternoon. My name is Carolina Muriel-Cuevas, and this is Ashley Rivas. We are both from the Galt Youth Commission and will be presenting our annual report today. Next slide, please. Thank you. As you may know, the Galt Youth Commission is comprised of 10 carefully selected Galt Youth Commissioners, high school students, my apologies. We each serve two-year terms. This year, we were able to welcome six new commissioners of Commissioners Jamie Martin, Haylen Stallions, as well as Ashley and I as returning commissioners. Next slide, please.
Ashley, Ashley, you need to unmute yourself.
I was already unmute. Okay. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so our purpose is outlined in the ordinance. However, in order to fulfill this purpose, we really needed to develop leadership foundational skills. Sorry, hold on. Our main questions for this year were how are we going to build better relationships throughout the community? And how can we encourage our youth throughout the community? How can we encourage our youth to get involved with activities that build better citizens? Much of this past year was spent looking at ways to improve our process so we can serve more effectively, and that starts with building a strong team. Next slide, please. The GYC Retreat was a team-building experience that was able to help returning and new commissioners to bond. We spent the day learning about what it means to be on the Galt Youth Commission. Through a facilitator, we brainstormed on some potential goals that we wanted to achieve, as well as share what we needed from our adult mentors. Through a facilitator, oh, sorry. Through a facilitator, we brainstormed on some, oh my goodness. Talk about some kind of impact we want to have on the community. This experience was extremely important because in this type of setting, we were able to build trust, which was a critical way for us to work together. We got to learn about each other through team-building activities, which was really fun. And this year, we took, we took on three community projects and a fundraising event that we would like to share with you. Next slide, please.
This year, Commissioner Jamie Martin was able to continue with her successful senior tech project as a help was greatly received by the senior citizens. Her project specialized in helping senior citizens who becoming more knowledgeable in the use and operation of technology, such as iPhones and learning how to operate Facebook or how to better operate the computer. Teens from Galt, from outside the Galt Youth Commission, were able to volunteer and get community service hours. This project lasted duration of four weeks and took place before the COVID-19 quarantine. Next slide, please. New to this year was the adoption of a street, specifically Lincoln Way from Terrace Lane to A Street. The street was agreed upon by all of the commissioners as this was a team project, although the planning of the cleaning dates, as well as the coordination of the commissioners helping, was headed by me. We chose to adopt this street specifically because of its location next to the Galt High School and fast food restaurants. Because of its closeness to such locations, the street was often riddled with McDonald's soda cups and food wraps. This project is to continue into next year as the adopting agreement is up to years, and we are to clean four times a year. However, due to the coronavirus quarantine, we were only able to clean once. I would also like to mention that adopting the street project wouldn't have happened without the partnership of the beautification committee and how much we are grateful for them, specifically Barbara Payne, who took the time to meet with me to discuss the process of the street adoption. Also, that her sign was able to be acquired under the Jenner's donation of Dry Creek Transport. Next slide, please.
We also got to take on the movie night fundraiser, which allowed our fundraising chair, Betsy Robles, and other commissioners to set up a booth for excited movie watchers. It was a success as we were able to sell snacks to the community and experience an event for the youth. Next slide, please. The Senses 2020 was our impact project this year. The project was a collaboration between the Galt Youth Commission and the McCaffrey Middle School students. The main purpose for this project was to get the community to participate in the senses by knowing why the Senses 2020 is important and how it affects everyone. This required us to attend a training at the Sacramento County Office of Education. We also had a representative from the U.S. Census Bureau present at our meeting, sorry, present at our meeting as he provided information on the senses that was Galt-specific. Through the help of the organization called People Reaching Out, we developed a community outreach and marketing plan. This entailed us to create a slogan, which our commissioner, Elena Neuberger, come up with that could help us with promoting the senses. Our outreach also included speaking at various public meetings, but due to COVID-19, our efforts were cut short. Nevertheless, this was a valuable experience, and we hope we increase participation that will benefit future generations of Galt. Next slide, please.
During this year, the Galt Youth Commission was able to assist in city events, such as the Kavinton Race, where we encouraged. where we encouraged runners and helped pass out water. The Galt Youth Commission also had a presence at National Night Out by having a stand where kids could either blow bubbles or play small games at each location. In December, we helped out with cookie decorating and passed out coloring books at the lighting of the night. We also volunteered at the annual community dinner that was put on by the Rotary. At each event, we made great community connections and hope great leader be able to continue with such events in the future. Next slide, please. At the beginning of the year of 2019, we held many events such as our canoeing trip and the McFarland Ranch Camp Fire and Drum Circle, where we got to form our bond as a team, as well as get a glimpse of future hopes and future projects. Such that these activities are critical for our success as it builds trust and a comfort level that would make it easier for us to work together later, as well as feeling safe sharing our opinions at our monthly meetings. We all had great fun getting to know each other, as well as getting to know the adult mentors. Next.
Serving on the Galt Youth Commission has been a wonderful opportunity. We spent the year focusing on public speaking as every Commissioner was required to create and present at one of our meetings an elevator speech on why people should participate in the senses. Throughout the year, we presented at Rotary and Lions meetings, as well as the Galt Elementary and High School districts. We learned about our Gallup strengths, and we hope to use them in ways that would help us work stronger together. And we had the opportunity to serve as community and civic leaders. Whether it was cleaning up the streets, helping seniors navigate technology, or informing the public on the 2020 senses, the skills we've learned through this experience will only benefit us in the future as we become responsible adults in the community. Next slide, please. On behalf of the Galt Youth Commission, I would like to thank you for your support. The impact we make on the community is not possible without the partnership and membership of many, of so many businesses. We're also grateful for our adult mentors who supported and guided us this year. We really appreciate your support, and this experience is definitely making a difference in our community, as well as us on the Commission. As you know, our year was shortened due to the COVID-19, as we have not been able to meet in March, April, or May. Nevertheless, as you see, we've attempted to maximize the opportunity you have afforded us. Thank you. Next slide, please.
Now that the end of the year has come, Commissioners Betsy Robles, Jamie Martin, Halen Stallions, and myself included have all finished up with our terms and will be leaving the Galt Youth Commission while others are welcomed in. Last year, we spread word of the open spots that were to be available via the newspaper and through an announcement to McCaffrey Middle Schoolers through K-Dog in the months of March and April. However, due to recent circumstances, we've had to extend the due date of applications well into this month, and interviews were to happen through Zoom calls. With that being said, I wish many great things upon the outgoing Commissioners, as I know they will continue doing amazing things online, and with, and holds great hope and excitement for the future incoming Commissioners, as they will have the opportunity to do many great things as well. Next slide, please. Thank you for being a great audience. Do any of you have any questions for Ashley and I?
Thank you. I would really like to appreciate Galt Youth Commission doing a good, excellent job, and also is doing a very good things for the community. Keep the Galt clean, keep the Galt safe. Thank you. Any other? Any other council member, any comment?
Mr. Mayor, if I could comment?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I want to thank you guys for all that you do. The Youth Commission is really an important thing in the community because, you know, the youth are the future of our, of our community and the country. Thanks, girls, you guys did a great job. I know it can be, you don't look nervous, but it can be nervous being on, in front of so many people. But I especially, specifically want to thank you guys for your involvement with the Galt Looking Good, the cleanup, cleanup days as someone who was very involved in getting that started when I was spending time on the Beautification Committee. It's dear, it's a project dear to my heart, and so I'm glad to see you guys jump on that. And I think it's an important thing, although it seems like a small thing to some, it's, it's a big thing to our community. And then I want to last thank Paige for being our liaison on the Youth Commission. And yeah, so again, good job. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
So ladies, I've really enjoyed working with you these past few years. And some of you, Carolina, Ashley, you're staying on, right? Yeah?
I reapplied.
Okay. So, it's been just a pleasure watching you grow and mature. Can each of you, just really quick, tell us something that you took away that you couldn't have gotten any, on any other committee or life experience?
Carolina, do you want to go first, or me?
You can go first, if you would like.
I'll go first. I think something that I took away from the Galt Youth Commission that was really important was, even though I kind of got distracted in the beginning, so I messed up quite a bit on the presentation, but I still think I did pretty okay. But I was able to go to a leadership conference because of the Galt Youth Commission, and I have recently been selected as a J Crew, so I was able to go back and help out more kids that like want to try out and do more leadership activities. So I'm really excited about helping out with them because then they get to go back to their community and try and help them out like we do here on the Galt Youth Commission.
Thank you.
What I've, what I've taken away from the Galt Youth Commission is that sometimes you need a team to do a project rather than taking on something by yourself, and that it's okay to ask questions, and it's okay to make mistakes because that's how you learn. And I've really enjoyed my time being here.
Thank you. Any other council member, any comment? I'm going to move the next.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to comment just briefly. I won't reiterate everything everyone else has said, but I will say this. Carolina and Ashley did an awesome job tonight presenting. And, and I was only able to get to one Youth Commission meeting this year, and it was the meeting that you got, you all were doing your elevator speeches. And those were impressive, but even more impressive to me and was the fact that you were able to provide critical feedback to each of your Commissioner members as they were done. And, and really, the feedback that you gave was spot on. And so it's nice to see the youth in this kind of a position and really growing with each other. And that's kind of what I took away from the, the one meeting I was able to get to. Again, thanks for all that you do and all your Commissioners. Congratulations on a, on an awesome year, even though it was cut short a little bit. And we look forward to those coming back, some good things again next year. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Great job.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
To the next presentation. Up in perfectly possible of Galt Annual Report to City Council for Community Benefit Funding Grant Fiscal Year 2019-2020.
Okay, next we have Galene Gomez with Perfectly Possible. I'm going to make her a panelist so she can join us.
Thank you.
And. Go ahead and unmute yourself, Galene, and go ahead and. Galene, are you there? There she is. Go ahead and unmute yourself, thank you.
Got it, thank you. Well, following those two young ladies, that's a tough act to follow, so amazing. As a teacher, the, the youth of our community and seeing them in leadership positions is dear to me. Anyhow, my name is Galene Gomez, I am here representing Perfectly Possible. We were the recipients of the Community Benefit, Benefit Grant from the 2019-2020 year. We did receive $2,000. Just to kind of let you know what we've been doing this year, we've continued much of what we've done in the past a little bit on a, kind of on a larger scale this year. We are heavily involved again in TNR, Trap Neuter Return of Feral and Community Cats. And with the shelter closures due to COVID-19, there has been a larger demand put up on smaller rescues such as ourselves. Just so far since January, we have TNR to 150 community cats here in the Galt area, 150 at least. And we have also removed and placed into foster 117 cats or kittens from these feral colonies. Through that program, we have expenses such as obviously food and supplies, and the benefit grant helps us with that. We also have a lot of partners that we work with and other rescues. We did not take in 117 cats. We actually were able to help take those cats from colonies and partner, do rescue transfers with many of them. I would also add that much of the work that we've done has been with closures through March and through May. So when I say we've fixed 150 cats, it was in a very short period of time due to shelter and program closures. The last thing that I would like to mention to you that we were able to take part in is we partnered with the Sacramento SPCA. We were part of a pilot program as they were trying to figure out how to reopen safely to the public. And so they invited seven or eight mass trappers and transporters to be a part of their program to test out their safety system. And through that process, in one week, we were able to trap, neuter, and return 61 community cats. That's in one week. We were also able to pull 33 kittens from two different sites and network those kittens into rescue. Anyhow, I cannot emphasize enough how much the community's support assists us in what we're doing. Again, it is, it's not cheap. And so we really do appreciate the funding that you did provide us with, and we are sad to see that it's not available so far this year. So, we do have, we were able to get a fireworks booth, and we hope and invite you guys to come see us as we have a fireworks booth in the lot on the corner of Caroline and Fairway, if I, I think those are correct anyhow. So please come see us, and again, thank you very much for your support.
Thank you, Galene, give us the annual report, and you guys doing an excellent job. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Sandu.
Any other council member?
Yeah, I just want to say thank you for all that you do. I did not realize the numbers were that high. That's, that's quite a lot of feral cats and cats that you guys have fostered. And thank you so much for doing that. It's just nice to see these animals getting the care they need.
Thank you so much. We take pride in helping the animals and also the residents who live around them because we know that unaltered colonies of feral cats are also, can be perceived as a nuisance. So we're happy to help the people who live around them as well.
Councilmember Farmer.
Yeah, I just want to say thank you for what you guys are doing. I, I like Councilwoman Lamson mentioned, I, I had no idea those kinds of numbers were that high, but as someone who, who is the husband of someone who likes to rescue cats or used to, I know sure that could be on a much smaller scale, of course, but, but I know it's a, it's a, it's a noble job you're doing out there, and it's very important to the community. It's kind of something you guys do behind the scenes that people really don't pay attention to, but it really has a huge effect. And then last thing, just on your comment about the, the funds being available. I know it's, it's heart-wrenching not to have those funds available, you know, because of our budget decisions and, you know, our discretionary money that was always a big help to, to noble causes in the community. So, look forward to someday maybe having those things back and we can start, you know, giving organizations like yourself and others that money again. So, thank you, Galene.
Excellent, thank you so much.
Any other council member? Vice Mayor, go ahead.
Yeah, Galene, thank you for all that you do in the community. And like many others said, you know, there would be other issues if you folks weren't out doing rescuing the feral cats. And, you know, I know you've done a lot of work with many, not only businesses, but residents in the community. And so, we really appreciate it, and I, I really appreciate you taking on and carrying on the work that Mary Lou Powers did for many years in our community, and we really thank you for that.
Thank you so much.
Thank you as well. I, I've noticed in certain areas where there used to be, you know, feral cats, not near as many. And I think that's attributable to your efforts and others. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Let's move to the next presentation called District Chamber of Commerce Annual Report to City Council for the Community Benefit Funding Grant Fiscal Year 2019-20.
Okay, I'm going to let Bonnie Rodriguez in so she can give the presentation for the Galt District Chamber of Commerce. Bonnie, are, can you speak?
Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Well, good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. I actually am a little excited to talk about this because it feels like it took place so long ago because of everything we've been going through. So I'm glad to have some positive to, to speak about. And I believe the majority of you were at the event, so I'm not going to go into full details about them because I know you guys have a heavy agenda. But something to kind of lift your spirits before diving into a lot of work that you need to do. You can go ahead and go to the next slide. So, as you know, this was a free family event. It had so much entertainment, free entertainment, hands-on activities. Kids were able to make rope dolls. I can't even remember half of them that, half of the activities that they had. A lot of hands-on learning about old-school Galt and what some of the, our forefathers here in Galt would have been doing, especially children-wise to keep them entertained when they weren't working the fields and the dairies. There were some friendly competitions. We had a lot of picture opportunities all around with, especially with our entertainment that walked around. People dressed in period clothing, a lot of games, a lot of displays. The train, model train display inside the Astralita Ballroom was a big hit. It, it just was an overall great opportunity. And I want to thank those council members who were able to make it to our hosted event when we brought in not just as honorary guests, but we had like John Natoli and Kathleen Galgiani and others who came in and who were invited. And we went to Brewster's, kind of a historic event to go and celebrate our 150, 50 years. If you can, next slide, please. At our best estimates, we had over 3,000 people in attendance. It was hard to keep track of how many because it was so spread out and so much going on, but that's probably on the low end. One of the things that probably hurt us, to be honest with you, is the heat. So, we forgot to put in that order to have a little bit of a cool weather for that event. And so we, it, it got awfully toasty. But I do want to say, and part of the reason why I put up this picture is looking at all of these people, not to bring up something negative, but this happened after the Gilroy incident. And I just wanted to shout out to our police officers, to the police department, because they did a wonderful job keeping people safe and orderly, but not in your face. They, they were just, they blended in and were there. And there was a lot that could have gone wrong, we know that, but it didn't. And we had a lot of fun, and the police officers were wonderful, and everyone who was involved was just wonderful with this. Next slide, please. So, we were granted $4,000 through the Community Benefit Grant, and we are very grateful for that. As you'll see later in the presentation, that this was a very costly event. So with that $4,000, we were able to provide t-shirts for the band members from the high schools, just to kind of bring them in and thank them for playing for us for free. The $455 of that paid for the beautiful sign that went over C Street, celebrating and drawing people down to the Old Town area. I do want to throw a shout-out, though, for express type and graphics, although we did pay $455 for that. That was only at half the cost that they covered the rest of it. $670 went to the CSC Fire Department for our, for our permits. $1,000 went to- $1,000 went to Sacramento County Valley Live Steamers Railroad, which provided free rides on a miniature train, which was also a big hit. $1,200 went to Sonoma Tin Type. That was pretty impressive. People were able to take an old tack, old time photo and then see it produced as, as it would have been 100 years ago on Tin Type. And they were able to purchase that for a nominal fee. And then, of course, we needed restrooms, so River Rats provided those, and that was about $450. Next slide, please. So overall, the profit and loss, we had about $40,000 in income through donations, through the banner program, through other fundraising efforts that we had, including merchandise. Unfortunately, we have some, quite a bit of merchandise left over. And including the, the books that were generated after the event to, that included photos from the event. So we still have those for sale. I'll put a plug in for that. So our total expenses were about $49,000. But the chamber sees that as money well spent. Again, that was on entertainment. And as you can see in this photo, the kiosk, which still isn't quite there, but the, the part of those, part of that cost went toward that. And we're hoping to be able to work with Public Works as soon as everybody can breathe. And, and get, get some time away from, you know, working hard in their normal duties to be able to get that up. And we appreciate all the staff that arrived. I loved this picture because you have the chief, obviously dressing up as a sheriff. And, and Chris Elias was our, I guess, our barkeep. And really appreciated the, the participation that staff and, and council members put into this. Next slide. We had, again, we had many sponsors at different sponsorship levels. These are the ones that gave financial assistance as far as actual money. And they, the financial donations ranged anywhere from $200 to, I believe, $5,000. We had one for that. So very grateful for these people and all these businesses and anyone watching out there. We highly encourage you to reach out to these business owners and thank them and use their services. And thank them for being great community participants. Next slide. So I'm just going to leave this up here and take questions. These are all of our banner sponsors. Very grateful for all of them. They, that was a huge contribution. I know many of you are up on this, were up on banners as well. Did want to let anybody out there who is wondering your banner, they all have been taken down. But we do have them, so if you have purchased them, so if you would like them, please reach out to the chamber or Tony at Express Type and Graphics. And we can get, find you your, your banner sheet you can take home. As a special thank you, definitely are appreciative of the city and all of the help. It's not just the $4,000, but the city put up all those banners. The city just, I can't even begin to think, to, to thank every person at the city. But Parks and Rec helped with setup and take down. And, and Public Works helped the same. They, they helped out there. And again, all of the city staff that were just participants and, and helped out for the event. George Reed Construction ended up saving us a little bit with, with barriers that we needed for safety. And we were grateful for them. And Pacific Construction did the same. And definitely a huge thank you to Councilman Sean Farmer, because without him, we, we wouldn't have gotten what we got. He was definitely the, the, the man behind it all, the man behind the curtain that did it all. And, and thank his family for the sacrifice. I'm sure they made how much time he put into this. So with that, I'll take any questions.
I think to Bonnie, so first of all, I would really like to thank you. You give us a very detailed annual report. And especially Chamber doing a lot of, you know, event supporting the community and a lot of time work. I really appreciate all the member of the Chamber doing a great job. Having connected with the, all these businesses and then also with the residents. Thank you. Thank you, Bonnie. Any other council member, Bonnie?
Sean. I'd just say something real quick. Yeah, it's like Bonnie said, this, this, I mean, you just look at these names up here. And this really was an event that, that really would not have taken place if it hadn't have been for everybody from, you know, a business to just, you know, Mr. And Mrs. Smith putting out money to buy a banner or make a monetary donation. As you saw, some of the, the large donators, you know, this took a lot of money. And, and, and so it would never have happened if, if it hadn't have been for, really was what was a community effort. Just looking back, you know, I have really fond memories of this event that everybody was able to come, you know, together and do that. And the Chamber and, and the, the event committee, there was just, you know, there was, there was a group of people that worked tirelessly, selflessly. That, you know, many of them go unmentioned here. You know, you all know who you are and you guys, this, this is just, this thing had so many moving parts. And so thank you to all the staff. It was great to see all the staff come out who dressed up period clothing, you know, our department heads that were out. It would just immerse themselves in the whole experience. And, and again, to the PD for keeping us all safe in what was kind of a scary time at the moment. So I just wanted to say that, and again, you know, there's just so many people to thank. But something that I, I'll always be proud of being a part of and just want to say thank you to everybody who was involved in it.
Thank you. Any other council member want to make any comment, any question?
Yeah, what, um, it was, it was an absolutely phenomenal event. And just the amount of public that showed up and enjoyed it. Unfortunately, a bunch of them requested that we do it again this year. They had so much fun. So I just really appreciate everybody putting that together. And I believe the chief was the Old Town Chief with his cowboy hat. And if you pay attention, you might still see that cowboy hat once in a while around the streets. But thank the Chamber and the Council and everybody that volunteered and put stuff together. It was a one-of-a-kind fabulous event.
I thought it was great as well. Bonnie, I agree with you. It could have been a bit, a little bit cooler. I think attendance might have been a little bit better, but all in all, I thought it was a great event. Thank those who were involved in organizing it, especially you, Sean. Thank you.
Yeah, Mayor Sandu, I'd just like to say a couple of words real quick. Reiterate everything everyone else said, but I will say thank you to the Chamber and Bonnie for spearheading it with Councilman Farmer. It was a wonderful event. And, and again, I want, I do want to reiterate what Councilmember Lamson said. Thank you to the community who came out and, and really supported it and took part in purchasing items from nonprofit organizations that were out there selling. And, and they really did a good job of, of getting involved in, in the organization, in, in the event. And it was really well organized and really well advertised. And so thanks to all. And we look forward to, I don't think I'll be around for the next 150th, but, but I certainly think that we, you know, there's probably another celebration coming up soon that, that we can do at some, at some level. So thank you.
Thank you. Anybody have any other question? If he's not, then I'm going to move to the next presentation. Next presentation is Light for the Heroes Event, Parks and Recreation Department.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. What I'd like to do is introduce our, our Market Manager, Special Events Manager, Jackie Garcia. She's going to be giving you some information on this. And then after, I'd like to address the Council too. So if you could allow Jackie in.
Jackie, you're allowed to speak. If you unmute your mic, you'll be able to join the meeting.
Hello?
Yes.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'm excited to share and invite you to our Lights for Hero event scheduled on Friday, June 26th through Sunday, June 28th from 8:30 to 10:00 PM on the Portion of the Market Grounds. This event will be a dynamic display with unique attributes tributing to our first responders, military, and our heroic healthcare providers. Two rows of the Market Grounds will be a drive-through light show highlighting heroes in a creative way using sound, lights, silhouettes, and photo displays honoring fallen, honoring fallen City of Galt Police Officer Kevin Ton and essential workers during this unprecedented time in our community. While driving through, the drivers will be dazzled by colored lights, a first responder vehicle, and American flags as well. Drivers will be in a procession no more than two to four minutes. The drive-through will conclude with an entire scene as a tribute to the Pearl Harbor survivors, honoring one of the most recent fallen heroes who was from the attack of Pearl Harbor on December 7th, 1941. The 98-year-old First Class Petty Officer Dalton Wally E. Walling of the US Navy. This final display will reenact a small glimpse of the reality of our soldiers that experienced the unfortunate day of Pearl Harbor. A statue was made of metal rebar with light standing a heroic 35 feet tall. Included will be an animated light display with audio and other visual effects. In addition to this event being sponsored by Cow Waste and Smud, including there is multiple partnerships with the Hamilton Family, Monkey Glue Lighting, Public Works, the Parks Department, Galt PD, and CSC Fire. Again, I'd like to thank you for allowing me to share this upcoming event and your support for this event to be able to honor our local heroes and fulfilling our country's freedoms. Do you have any questions?
Any council member have any question?
I'd like to say something, Mayor, if that's possible, if no council members have any questions. I just want to really thank, I just really want to thank Jackie. Jackie's worked really hard on this event. It, it's difficult to plan for something where you don't know what the rules are going to be in the future. I can assure everybody that we'll be in compliance with what we have, what the state and county have in place today regarding the COVID guidelines. And I also wanted to take the time to thank our Public Works Department. They stepped up huge in this event, helping transport Wally to Galt and repairing some of the, the broken parts he had on him. So a shout out to our Public Works Department. So with that, Jackie and I are both available for any questions you have.
Armando, I would like to thank you and whoever involved in this event. Thank you for bringing that event.
Yes, thank you, Armando, for putting this thing together. I think, I think it'll, I think it'll go over well in the community. And, um, you know, during these times, it's difficult, like as you pointed out, to, to, to plan around regulations and, and requirements. So I applaud you for your efforts and thank you very much.
Yeah, I too, I too want to say thanks. I know, you know, a lot of people are disappointed because we weren't able to have our Fourth of July because of what's going on. But I, I am pretty excited about this thing. I was talking to Jackie about it, and Armando, you know, recently over at the farmer's market, I believe. But I think it's going to be really cool. And it is, you know, with Memorial Day just passing, being able to really, you know, honor veterans. And, you know, with all the COVID things, things going on to be able to honor our, our first responders and our, and our healthcare workers. And then, of course, our police officers who keep us all safe every day. And, and our fallen officer, Kevin Ton, since we didn't have the, the normal marathon for him associated with Independence Day celebration. Were able to, you know, have something for him as well. So thank you, Parks and Rec, Public Works, everybody involved in this. So I look forward to checking it out and hopefully goes over as a really big hit. So thanks, guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Sean.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to also make a comment real quick. Armando and Jackie, thank you for all you've done to put, throw this together. I say throw this together just because you didn't have a whole lot of time to plan and, and, and do it. I'm sure it's going to be an absolutely spectacular event. I plan on bringing friends through, probably on every single night. But we appreciate all you do and, and all you did to put this event together and look forward to seeing you out there.
Thank you. Councilman Lamson.
Yeah, I'm really excited. I have to say, I think Wally almost made me late for a meeting when they were getting the crane to take him down. Had no idea what it was. Pretty ginormous there, so I'm kind of excited to see him.
Yeah, I think that's the, the part that I'm most excited about and what's caused the biggest headaches in Public Works, my life and Jackie's life. Trying to put that together. But I think, I think it'll be worth it. I truly do.
Thank you, Armando, you and Jackie. Again, thank you. So moving the next agenda item is D. Tina, may I have a public comment, please?
Under Government Code Section 549, 54.3, members of the public may address the City Council on non-agenda items. The public comments section is for the City Council to receive comments. Except for brief responses to questions, no discussion or action may be taken on any item that is not listed on the agenda. Please limit comments to a maximum of five minutes. Due to the statewide emergency and social distancing guidelines, public comments may be submitted via email to pubcom@cityofgalt.org and will be read out loud, subject to the customary five-minute time limitation. Also, members of the public may participate electronically via HTTPS colon backslash backslash US02web.zoom.us backslash J backslash 89972822766 webinar ID 89972827266.
Thank you.
I, I did receive one comment in PubCom.
Okay, go ahead, Tina.
Randy from Galt Fitness Pro regarding Planning Commission applicants. I would like to ask Council to suspend appointing applicants at tonight's meeting. With meetings being in Zoom and the public not aware of four new spots that are open. It is important that Galt citizens whom are more qualified or equally qualified have a fair opportunity to apply to help grow and represent the citizens in a fair and honest approach.
Thank you.
Is that on the agenda? No, it is not.
I think what he may be referring to is Measure R, which is at the end of the agenda tonight. But Planning Commission appointments are not on the agenda.
All right, next agenda item is F, Consent Calendar. Tina, could you read for me from item 1 to 5, Consent Calendar?
Accept the minutes as submitted. Receive and file warrants for the period ending June 30th, June 3rd, 2020. Review the Sacramento Yellow Mosquito and Vector Control District's annual report as presented. Adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with Dan Cortinovas for optimization services at the wastewater treatment plant in the amount of up to $38,880. And approve the proclamation as presented.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move the Consent Calendar for approval as read.
It's moved by Vice Mayor Lozano and second by Councilmember Farmer. May I have a rule call vote, please?
Vice Mayor Lozano.
Aye.
Councilmember Farmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Campion. Councilmember Lamson.
Aye.
Mayor Sandu.
Aye. Motion carry 5 to 0. Thank you. Next agenda item is Schedule Matter Notice of Public Hearing. Subject: Formation of Community Facility District Number 2021 Public Service. And I would like to ask Tina, notice of public hearing was mailed and published in
in accordance with the law?
Yes, notice was mailed and published in accordance with the law.
Thank you. And I would like to ask the city staff, providers, a report on that.
Okay, we have Kimberly and Kim Byrnes.
Yeah, hi. My name is Kim Byrnes and I will put myself on video real quick. Good evening. I'm with Best Fest in Krieger and my partner, Rinald Shaw, helped start this formation a few weeks ago. And now here we are to finalize the formation by conducting the hearing and conducting the election with the adoption of a few resolutions. You may remember that this is a Services and Maintenance CFD. It includes CRV Investments, which is the owner of the Dry Creek Oaks Senior Subdivision. And the types of facilities are police and fire, maintenance, including landscape and lighting of parks, parkways, streets, roads, open space, also some flood and storm protection services and maintenance of some storm drains. Let's see. The, there's a report. There are three types of taxes to be levied on the properties in the CFD. They include taxes for different use designations, which would include single-family residential property and multifamily residential property. And the special taxes are divided into Special Tax A, B, and C. And they are allocated for police services and criminal justice services, maintenance of the parks, parkways, open space, landscaping, and flood control and storm drain, and then the fire protection facilities. And I think you know where the property is. It's along I-99. By, I can't say the name of this road, but it looks like.
That's on the both side of the road.
Yeah, Boso Road, Boso Road? Is that it? Yeah. Okay, so at this time, it's time during the hearing. Have you opened the hearing?
Not yet.
Okay, so that is the report. If there are any questions, we could proceed with, I could answer any questions or we can proceed with the hearing.
I have one, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Yeah. You had indicated under Special Tax A that it was, you mentioned police, but I did not hear Municipal Services, maybe it was just me, but it appears that there are more than just police services for a host of items that are defined under Municipal Services. Is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you. That is all.
Councilmember, any question? Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Sandu and Ms. Burns, I, Byrnes, I have just a quick question. There was some, the, some talk from some community members recently that I was made aware of that there was an understanding that this was a vote going to the city voters as a whole and, and, and that's not the case. I mean, we're having the election tonight, but, but, but could you explain why that would, or your understanding of why that may have been misinterpreted?
Sure, this tax that is going to be levied is only going to be levied on the property that we are discussing now, the CRV Investments property. And it is not going to be levied on any other property in the city until the time that such property requests to be or becomes developed and the city asks for it to be included into the CFD. So it's a landowner vote. There's no registered voters in the, on the property. And it does not impact any other property other than the CRV Investment Property.
Okay, thank you so much. I appreciate that. It was just, I think when people started looking through the Stafford Board, it got a little, maybe a little confusing. They thought we were going to the polls for this. So I appreciate the explanation.
Mr. Mayor, may I make a comment as well?
Where, Councilmember Farmer?
Yeah, just to piggyback on what Rich was commenting about. I know that, you know, I received some concern from citizens as well, basically just not quite, you know, understanding exactly and, and kind of really seeing the processes as it's been going through council to this point. And I just want to reiterate what, what Kim was saying is that just in, you know, in layman's terms for everybody that's out there watching, you know, this is a mechanism that's going to be in place for houses that are not yet built. This is basically something that we plan to have on all development moving forward from this point in an effort to get a handle on our maintenance costs, lighting, landscape, green areas, green spaces, parks, things that are built as part of these developments, police services, fire services, municipal services, all those things that were mentioned. If we don't do that and if we don't make development pay its fair share moving forward, then that cost is going to be left on the existing citizens, most of you that are watching now. So what we're doing is we're, we're trying to get ourselves on good footing moving forward to get a handle on these costs that are lighting and landscapes and those things that, for those of you that are paying attention, have, have fallen short of and are not able to because of Prop 13 and other things. So just want to recap that this is not a CFD on the city. That would have to be something that had to be voted on in, in one form or another on the ballot. This is not that. And so I just want to clarify that for those of you that are still questioning this. And so thank you for bringing that up, Vice Mayor Lozano, and thank you, Kim, for explaining that as well. Thanks.
Councilmember Lanson.
I just, I don't need to repeat the same thing that Councilmember Farmer and Vice Mayor Lozano said. So that's, that's perfect.
Thank you. Hi, Kim, I have a, just a clarification for that, but this CFD is going to go to every new developer come to this, come to the city or every i- is lot is now developed, right? And this also can go, for example, that, that's, I just want to clear with the public because this vote is not have this, this vote only the person going to develop the land, right?
Yeah, the, this, the plan for this CFD is that as undeveloped property in the city undergoes development, we will ask that new development to join into the Community Facilities District so that the new development can pay for the cost of municipal services, police, fire, maintenance of the roadways that is impacted by the new development. It will not include any existing houses or other types of residents, but single-family and multifamily residence, residential development that occurs in this city will start to come into this CFD.
Thank you, thank you. Any council, we don't have any comment. I would like to open the public hearing. And I would like to ask Tina, any protest, comments, question from interested person, including person going the property within the proposed Community Facility District? Any comment on email, any protest? Tina Rose?
I have no hands raised at this time.
No written protests have been received.
Thank you. If there is no public comment, and I would like to announce no further pub, public testimony will be accepted. And there is no written protest, right? That's Tina?
No written protest.
All right, and there is no, whether there is any person registered to vote within the Community Facility District?
No, the County of Sacramento Register of Voters has certified that there are no registered voters within the proposed Community Facilities District.
Thank you. City Clerk, if the owner of all the taxable property in the district have consented to holding the special election on June 16th, but there is, there is a full person and I believe there is only one honor, right?
Yes.
Thank you. So Tina, City Clerk's special election may be held on June 16th?
Yes.
And you already confirmed with the honors, right? Thank you. And we have a kind of, can be a four separate motion? And Tina, if you have it, can you read this motion then?
Mayor, if we could close the public hearing before you move to that motion, thank you.
Okay, close the public hearing. And we would like to move on to motions. Tina, could you read number one?
Resolution of the City Council of the City of Galt, acting in its capacity as the legislative body of the Community Facilities District Number 2020-1 Public Services of the City of Galt, establishing such Community Facilities District.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Campion.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Lamson. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Vice Mayor Lozano.
Aye.
Councilmember Farmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Campion.
Aye.
Councilmember Lamson.
Aye.
Mayor Sandu.
Aye. Motion carry 0 to 5. Thank you.
And next?
Resolution of the City Council of the City of Galt, California, calling a special election and submitting to the voters of the City of Galt Community Facilities District Number 2020-1 Public Services, County of Sacramento, State of California Proposition with respect to the annual levy of special taxes within the Community Facilities District to pay the cost of certain services to be provided by the Community Facilities District and a proposition with respect to establishing an appropriations limit for said Community Facilities District.
So moved.
Tina, did you already confirm with the official ballot is?
The official ballots have been opened and that all votes are in favor of the propositions presented on the ballot.
Thank you. Motion move by?
So moved.
Councilmember Campion and second.
Second.
Second by Vice Mayor Lozano. Tina, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Vice Mayor Lozano.
Aye.
Councilmember Farmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Campion.
Aye.
Councilmember Lamson.
Aye.
Mayor Sandu.
Aye. Motion carry 5 to 0. Thank you.
Tina, may I have the next?
Resolution of the City Council of the City of Galt, acting in its capacity as the legislative body of the City of Galt, Community Facilities District Number 2020-1 Public Services, County of Sacramento, State of California, declaring the result of a special election in such Community Facilities District.
So moved.
Second.
Motion move by Councilmember Campion. And second by, can you read? Second by Councilmember Farmer. Tina, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Vice Mayor Lozano.
Aye.
Councilmember Farmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Campion.
Aye.
Councilmember Lamson.
Aye.
Mayor Sandu.
Aye. Motion carry 5 to 0. Thank you.
Tina, could you move the next?
Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Galt, acting in its capacity as the legislative body of City of Galt Community Facilities District, Number 2020-1 Public Services, County of Sacramento, State of California, authorizing the levy of a special tax in such Community Facilities District.
And just to clarify, the ordinance is the, the motion is that introduced the ordinance that the city clerk just read for first reading by title only.
So moved. Second.
Can move my Vice Mayor Lozano, second by Councilmember Campion. Now may I have a roll call vote, please?
Vice Mayor Lozano.
Aye.
Councilmember Farmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Campion.
Aye.
Councilmember Lamson.
Aye.
Mayor Sandu.
Aye. Motion pass by 5 to 0. Thank you. So move to next agenda item, regular calendar. City Manager's Office. Subject: Approval of New Job Classification and Salary for Assistant City Clerk.
Mayor Sandu, members of the council, good evening. As the council is aware, the appointed position of Clerk Administrator has been vacant since October 31st, 2019 upon the retirement of the previous Clerk Administrator. The executive assistant in the clerk's office has been performing the position requirements of Clerk Administrator on a temporary basis since that time. Out of, it's referred to as an out-of-class appointment or a out-of-classification appointment. And such appointments are meant to be temporary and not a long-term solution to the vacancy of a particular position. Additionally, the California Public Employee Retirement System does restrict certain compensation reporting for out-of-class assignments pursuant to law. At any time that the city has a vacancy, it allows us the opportunity to take a look at the overall structure within which that particular position fits and reevaluate how the classification structure might exist going forward. And it provides the city with the opportunity to make certain modifications. In this particular case, we've taken a look at the requirements of the city clerk's office and we've developed a job specification establishing a new position of Assistant City Clerk. And that particular position would act in the absence of the Clerk Administrator performing and carrying out the job duties necessary to ensure the maintenance and operations of the clerk's office itself. The Assistant City Clerk position would require five years of increasingly responsible administrative support, experience, and significant experience within the city clerk's office itself. It would require possession of a notary public commission as well as the possession of a certified municipal clerk designation by the International Institute of Municipal Clerks. And just as a side note, a CMC or Certified Municipal Clerk Designation takes a number of years to, to achieve. In addition to identifying a job specification for Assistant City Clerk, the Human Resources Staff conducted a compensation review for that position based on, and they did that by assessing comparator agencies that the city currently uses for such purposes. Based on, and they did that by assessing comparator agencies that the city currently uses for such purposes. And based on that comparison of, of job classifications with comparator agencies, the Human Resources Department is recommending one that the Assistant City Clerk be classified as an exempt position, that means exempt from overtime under the Fair Labor Standards Act, and that it be placed in the mid-management employee group at wage grade fifty. And you'll see that on the second page of your staff report. Assistant City Clerk would be set at approximately fifteen percent below the position of Clerk Administrator itself. And it, from an internal equity standpoint, it's consistent with position of Human Resource Analyst to. With the adoption of the City Clerk, excuse me, Assistant City Clerk job specification, the I, the interim city manager, will move forward with reclassifying the current executive assistant into the Assistant City Clerk position. She's been performing that position since the beginning of November. And in addition, because that position also provides administrative support to both the, or to the, the city manager, it's not anticipated that the executive assistant position would need to be immediately backfilled. And so with approval of these proposed changes, it results in a total financial savings of approximately eleven thousand seven hundred seventy-two dollars per month or hundred and forty-one thousand dollars per year. And with that, we recommend the, the council's approval of the job specification of Assistant City Clerk and the reclassification of the current executive assistant into that position. I'd be happy to answer any questions that the council might have.
Thank you, Tom. Mr. Haglund, I have a couple question. One is that executive clerk, we are modifying to the Assistant City Clerk, right? Because the whole thing when modifying the job, we almost saving hundred and forty thousand dollars a year.
Between modifying the, the, the position and not backfilling the executive assistant position contributes to that total savings.
Okay, the other my question, just for a clear clarification for the public and elected position, we're not doing anything on the elected position.
Yeah, nothing's happened. You're right. You're absolutely right.
Thank you. Thank you. Council, Vice Mayor Lozano.
Yeah, just, just real quick, neither one of these positions, the executive assistant position nor the Assistant City Clerk positions are part of any bargaining unit. Is that correct?
I believe that the, the executive assistant is a confidential position right now. And then the Assistant City Clerk position would become a mid-management position if it's established and that is an unrepresented group.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Campion.
Yeah, no, I, I agree completely with the recommendation of staff. I think Tina's done a great job. And the reclassification at this time seems appropriate and the cost savings at this time is also very good, so.
Thank you. Councilmember Lamson.
Yeah, I agree with the change for this. Thank you very much, Tom. And reclassification will save the city some money at this most needed time. Looks like a good move on our part.
Councilmember Farmer.
Yeah, I just want to reiterate what everybody else said. I thank you, Tom, for bringing this back. And this is something we had talked about looking at, you know, for a while as, as a measure of cost savings. And then it just kind of, you know, finally get a chance to circle back around on it. You know, Tina and, and Rose and all the people that work in the office, you know, yous all do a great job and, and I appreciate all that you do. Thank you. And I appreciate Tom trying to find, you know, the savings is just considerable. And I think it's important that, that the community, we always see, you know, things being cut in the community with regards to budget that we can prove to the community that we look inward too as well to try to find things to, where we can give on our side in City Hall instead of just, you know, always trying to reach out to the citizen. So I, I appreciate that. So thank you.
My last comment is Tina, you well qualified to do that job. She have a lot of experience on end of that job. Thank you, Tom. Any other council member, any other comment, public comment? Any public comment on?
Raised hands at this time.
Tina, any public comment on the email?
No written comment.
Thank you. Council, do we have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Vice Mayor Lozano, second by Councilmember Campion. Tina, do we have a roll call vote, please?
Vice Mayor Lozano.
Aye.
Councilmember Farmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Campion.
Aye.
Councilmember Lamson.
Aye.
Mayor Sandu.
Aye. Motion carry with five to zero. Thank you. Next agenda item is citywide wayfinding signage program.
Evening, Mayor and members of City Council. Amy Mendez, Economic Development Manager. I am here this evening to introduce the citywide wayfinding signage program. As you may know, staff had applied for the Sacramento County TOT Grant Program for three potential opportunities. The first was funding for Walker Community Park Phase One B. The second was for funding of a wayfinding signage program. And the third was spending for half the cost of a tourism coordinator. We ultimately did not receive any of these grant requests. However, Supervisor Dawn Matoli did provide us with a grant for nineteen thousand dollars to use towards the development of a wayfinding signage program for the City of Galt. Wayfinding signage was first identified years ago by businesses and community members of the Economic Development Task Force as an amenity needed to direct visitors to places like the Galt Market, the Old Town Area and other destinations in Galt. It was also identified as needed to provide a sense of identity for Galt. Studio LaMarge was ultimately chosen as the consultant to be the best fit for the project. They have completed similar programs in El Crito, Pleasanton, San Pablo, Sacramento, as well as several other cities. While signs exist in the City of Galt currently, which are intended to help direct visitors to public and private facilities, it's definitely not a comprehensive signage system. Rather, there are many layers of sign efforts that have evolved over time with multiple designs, sizes, colors, which leads to varying degrees of effectiveness. These signs contribute to an overall impression of visual clutter and potential confusion. Included in your packet as attachment A is a pretty good depiction of the issues existing within the signage community. Wayfinding signage is typically used to aid navigation for residents and visitors to important destinations. In Galt's case, this includes the Old Town Area, the Galt Market, various parks, as well as cultural and historic locations. A new wayfinding signage system would project a consistent image and brand for the entire city while providing a complete navigational system within the city's boundaries. Additionally, wayfinding signage is oftentimes alerts drivers to destinations they didn't know existed, providing for an additional marketing and tourism opportunity. Tom, I don't know if you or Rose is working the PowerPoint. You guys can hold off. The consultant's going to speak here shortly, so.
I went ahead and let Max Heim and Sue.
Yeah, they're both on the call and I think Max is gonna take over with the presentation. So I'll just finish with the introduction really quick and then he can do his part. So when we started this project, we assembled a wayfinding signage committee, which included members from the Chamber of Commerce, Historic Preservation Committee, Historical Society, the Beautification Committee and Planning Commission. Our intent with including stakeholders was to ensure that the process concluded with a design that portrayed a true representation of Galt. The committee worked with the consultant to determine which branding and design elements reflected the unique characteristics of Galt. So using this feedback, the consultant developed a variety of sign concepts and color options for consideration. Additionally, the committee members reviewed and ranked the list of destinations that could be included in the signage program. The goal ultimately was to identify destinations that had a public or visitor significance within the community. This included cultural, historic, nature, recreation and civic oriented destinations. The final destination list is included in your staff report. I'd like to note that it's difficult to include a large number of destinations in the program since only a few destinations are able to fit appropriately on each sign. This ensures that the signage is effective and visible to a driver and doesn't recreate an issue with sign clutter. Our consultant, Max Heim, is on the line this evening. He'll be going through the actual final wayfinding signage pro- program, including the final design concepts, sign types, specifications, et cetera. With the new signage program, we do anticipate removing over thirty existing signs within the community, really in an attempt to eliminate the sign clutter that has evolved over time. The funds for fabrication and installation of the proposed signage have been budgeted as part of the recently adopted Capital Improvement Plan utilizing transportation funds. Our hope is to begin the wayfinding signage implementation next fiscal year. And with that, I will have Max go through the wayfinding signage program.
Thank you, Amy.
Yes, can hear you.
All right, thank you. Good evening, Mayor and council members. So they've, Amy's already put up our, on screen, our program goals for this program, which was to create the uniform citywide wayfinding signage program, which, and it's ideas to create a visitor-friendly business environment and promote a vibrant civic identity as, yeah, Amy stated. So next slide, please. If we can, so here's a graphic treatment that was decided upon after, you know, meeting with the committee and soliciting public input. We adopted a design that was included traditional elements, you know, referring back to the historical significance of the City of Galt, but also trying to make a relatively clean and contemporary presentation. And so we had the two types of signs, vehi- vehicular directional sign and the parking identification signs. And there's several sizes of vehicular sign. Next slide, please. And we also agreed on a color palette, which are the, the blue color somewhat and the red color refer back to the City of Galt logo design. Then we picked a slate color as an accent. The pearl dark gray metallic is the hardware color for the new posts and other hardware that'd be installed. And then we also included natural aluminum, which is on the existing sign post as part of the palette for comparisons. We've adopted a relatively subdued palette, which we think provides, yeah, kind of a elegant presentation compared to, and which will not be what? Not stand out in a gaudy or unsophisticated way. Should provide a kind of a, you know, sophisticated image for the city. Next slide. This just on the materials, this is a, we're using side panels are aluminum. We're using automotive, automotive grade paint finish for and then the lettering graphics are surface supplied retro reflective cut vinyl. That way the signs will be readable at night by reflecting automobile headlights. The G logo has kind of a special treatment. We have, it's actually a sculpted logo. It's cut out in two layers, create kind of a stepped, three-dimensional effect. So we'll cast a small shadow and give the whole thing a richer and kind of a dimensional look. The posts and hardware will be powder coated for, for durable finish and give sort of as a consistent color treatment. So this is a, this sort of fabrication process and color process is kind of industry standard and would normally get a seven to ten year warranty. So this is, this should be a durable and attractive finish. Next slide. So here we have a photo mock-up of two types of the directional sign imposition. So these are, gives you a sense of the scale. This, on the left, have the largest sign type, which has four messages. And on the right, we have the smallest directional sign, which we have one message. And showing those would be seen in context of the, you know, streets, the city. And these are actually the actual messages that would go in these locations. Or, I mean, within a few feet of these locations at any rate. So you can see that, you know, it seems a little good with the the, your environment, the city environment and infrastructure. Next slide. We have the, this is the, I, I'll just go through these quickly. The Type A vehicle design is the largest size. It has four messages. Or if one of the messages is requires two lines of text, because it's a long name, it would have three messages. And there's a, they can be mounted either to the existing street lamp posts, seen on the left. Or if they stand alone, we have a four inch aluminum powder coated post that would mount on. So we look, it'll, it'll save a little money to mount them on the street lamp posts. But you could only, the sign content, of course, is very location specific. So if you don't have a street lamp post on that block, well then you have to put up a new post for that particular sign. So, and that's, so you, and we, the numbers are here on the slide. Probably don't have to go through that detail right now. Next slide. Type B sign is slightly smaller and has a lesser message capacity. Next slide. Please. And the Type C, smaller yet, and one more. Next slide. And yes, finally we have this, this, the Type D is a single message sign. And there's a, and you know, these will be, we will choose the sign type that it's the, you know, smallest sign type that's necessary for the messages in a particular location for economy and also because you don't want to have a, you know, a large blank sign that would have like one message and a lot of blank area. That is like an invitation to graffiti, you know. Not that we really expect that to be a big problem here. Next slide, please. And so here, and then the other sign type is the parking identification sign. We have these, well, they'll be placed basically at the, how City of Galt public parking entrances. So certain lots that have two entrances might have two signs. Some of these signs will be double-sided, so that traffic for approaching from both directions where they, we'd see the parking entrance. Next slide, please. And so that's, here's, you see it in scale with a car. We, this is a low sign designed to be seen from a driver's eye view. It's as opposed to the wayfinding signs, which are meant to be high mounted, so you can see them over the top of other vehicles. Next slide. And then we're, this is our, we have twenty-three destinations that are supported in the program. There are fifty-nine new signs, but, you know, twenty-one of those are parking signs. These are placed at thirty-two locations. By location, I mean basically one block that has, it may have a couple signs on it. Based on different approaches or different directions to travel. And then we're saying, we are roughly thirty obsolete existing signs are to be replaced. And possibly while we're going through this program, we find a few others that would be made redundant as well. And possibly while we're going through this program, we find a few others that would be made redundant as well. And I think that's, that's it. We're, we're very happy to work on this program. We think it's, it's a, it's a great program. And that it should, you know, we're looking forward to seeing it implemented. Thank you.
Thank you, Max. And with that, if there's any questions from council, we are here to answer any questions that you might have.
I have a question, Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Yeah, go ahead.
I just want to thank, you know, Amy for your hard work on this and, and Steve Lamaj for their work in putting this together. And most importantly, what I liked about this project, which has kind of been something that I think has been kind of been kicked around for a long time, a couple of years, I think at least, even before it was actually an official, something brought to the council, kind of an idea was, you know, and there was no money available. But Amy's kind of always been involved in that process and you know, it's just something to try to, you know, help with the economy, you know, and getting people to navigate the city better and find businesses and, and, and know where they're at and kind of take out those gaps in our community as people traverse. And, and then lastly, the, the community input, we had a lot of stakeholders, as, as was mentioned, you know, people from all different organizations and business owners and I can't remember even all the people, but they all had good input. There's a lot of input, a lot of, lot of, you know, a lot of ideas were put into this. So this wasn't just something that, you know, this was something that was a collaborative effort. So I just want to say thanks for this. I, I think it's going to be good. Thanks again, Amy, for your work on this. And thank you, Max, for your presentation. Thanks.
Thank you.
Any other council member?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I have a quick comment. I'd like to reiterate what Councilman Farmer said. There was a lot of community input and, and that's important. I think that I see this as two phase, right? I, I see the first is, once these signs go up, to help some of our own community members navigate maybe new things they didn't know about and stimulate the economy that way. But certainly from a second, second and secondarily, you know, from an economic development perspective, when we have large events here in our community and or even people come down to the market, you know, this is, this may generate quite a bit more business for for our community and, and increase that economic status. And, and I really appreciate the work that was put into this and, and hope to see those signs up soon. Thanks.
Thank you.
Amy, I'd just like to say congratulations. I've seen the signs in your office and they're absolutely beautiful. And I know it's been going on for many, many years and how exciting to get something consistent. And the committee did a great job picking colors and Stein style and font. And it, it gets confusing when you get out there and there's two thousand different kinds of fonts and what's going to show up best. They just look beautiful and so excited to see these start to go up. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Amy. You look around at the signs, the directional signs that we have now and they are different depending upon when they were put up. And as Paige mentioned, I think it brings a level of consistency and it's attractive and it's informative. And I think that's what we needed and I think you delivered. Great job.
Thank you.
Glad to see it's in the budget, too.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Amy Mendez, thank you for your hard work. Well, these signs is great. Thank you for your hard work.
I have to say thank you as well to our public work staff. They've been really helpful in identifying signs that can be removed, ones that just aren't necessary, traffic signs that we've come across. So I think it'll clean things up a lot. It'll be a nice addition. And one of the, you know, driving forces behind this really was we do have so many people that come in for the Galt market from out of town that don't even know Old Town exists. And so wanting them to know that, you know, the Old Town area is really just a couple of blocks away. So that instead of just getting on the freeway and leaving, they actually, you know, might look to drive a little bit farther down C Street to determine what's, you know, in there. So that was, you know, part of the purpose behind this. So it is an exciting project. I'll be excited to see it go through fabrication and installation.
Thank you. Recommended action. Do we have any public comment on this agenda item?
I do not have any written comments.
And I do not have any hands raised.
Thank you. Recommended action, approve a citywide wayfinding signag program including schematic signag design and destination points and direct staff to proceed with fabrication and installations of signag. We have a motion to approve that.
I'm moved.
Moved by Councilmember Lamson and second by Councilmember Farmer. Tina, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Vice Mayor Lozano.
Hi.
Councilmember Farmer.
Hi.
Councilmember Campion.
Bye.
Councilmember Lamson.
Hi.
Mayor Sandu.
Hi. Motion carried for five, five to zero. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Amy. Next agenda item is eight three. Corona virus COVID nineteen update. City manager, Mr. Hagland, information only.
Mayor Sandu, members of the council, this afternoon Sacramento County is reporting eighteen hundred and twenty-five COVID nineteen cases with sixty-three deaths. There are now twenty-nine cases in Galt, which is almost double the amount that we had two weeks ago. The San Joaquin County Department of Public Health is reporting seventeen hundred and forty-nine COVID cases. And when you take a look at what our previous reporting had been for San Joaquin County and Sacramento County, you may recall that San Joaquin County seemed to be greatly trailing Sacramento in terms of the total number of cases. And at seventeen hundred and forty-nine, they have had a market increase in the number of COVID cases. And that may have led San Joaquin County to pull back last week on how far they were venturing into tier three of the reopening plan. They report forty-seven deaths to date. Sacramento County is our operative county and they issued an amended public health order last Friday, June twelfth. And that allows for further relaxation of restrictions on low risk businesses consistent with the state of California resilience roadmap. Sacramento County is able to move further into stage three than some other counties because they were able to successfully provide a variance attestation that was approved by the state on May twenty. The following activities and venues are now allowable under the Sacramento County amended public health order. Those include bars and wineries, hotels, lodging and short term rentals, campgrounds, RV parks and outdoor recreation, gyms and fitness facilities, pools. And I'll be introducing our Parks and Recreation Director in just a minute to talk about pools, specifically our aquatic center. Museums, galleries, zoos and aquariums are now covered by the relaxed restrictions. Family entertainment centers, movie theaters, day camps, tribal casinos, card rooms and satellite wagering facilities and race tracks. Additionally, one of the important things to identify here is that with all of these openings or, or the ability for businesses to begin to conduct business. It is not business as usual, meaning prior to COVID nineteen. Businesses must include a policy for face coverings in their protocol and provide face coverings to staff when six feet of social distance is not possible. Sector specific guidance can be found on the covid nineteen.ca.gov website and as well as at the Sacramento County website. Businesses are advised to carefully review state orders and guidance to determine whether their business falls within the confines of the orders such that they can legally open. Restaurants in particular should be following social distancing guidelines, not filling every table. The servers should be wearing masks if they can't maintain the six foot social distancing and the like. Dr. Bealenson, the Director of Health Services, indicated that in spite of the, the recent reopenings, the, the risk of the virus is still present. He indicates that the county has seen an increase in COVID nineteen cases and hospitalizations in large part due to social gatherings. And he just wants people to be sensible about how they go about doing that. And indicates it's still the best defense against contracting COVID nineteen continues to be staying at home and physical distancing, wearing a face covering, washing hands frequently, avoiding touching eyes, nose, mouth with unwashed hands and obviously avoiding being around people who have been diagnosed with COVID or that have COVID nineteen systems. We are anticipating a new health order to be issued this coming Friday regarding the further lifting of some restrictions on those businesses such as nail salons that still have restrictions. So we will be watching for those orders or to see if the, the orders are revised and we will make those revisions to our city website. And I think that that, oh, I did want to also identify that as businesses reopen under guidelines for social distancing, the city has a supply of face coverings that we can provide to local businesses. And so we encourage them, if they haven't obtained their own supply, to contact the city. Again, you can get information on the city providing face coverings from the city's website, ci.galt.ca.us and just click on our COVID nineteen page for more particulars on how to obtain those face masks. With that, I'd like to introduce our Parks and Rec Director, Armando Solis, to provide the council and community with a bit of an update as to our aquatic center. Armando.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. So what I'm going to be talking about is that some of the guidelines that were placed on opening of the Aquatic Center, public pools. Well, I'm happy to announce that we, we will be opening our pools starting July one. But there are going to be some modifications according to those guidelines. Some of those modifications are, and you're going to hear a lot of no's. So no water slides, no pool parties, no water size. We won't be allowing food or drink into the facility. There'll be no in and out privileges. And we basically cut our capacity in half to two hundred and seventy-three people. We've changed the hours from two to eight. That will be a nonstop six hours typically Monday through Friday, we'd have swim lessons between five and, and seven o'clock. So we took that out and it's all public swim between two and eight P M. Seven days a week, we move swim lessons to the morning and we move lap swim to before, right, right before our swim lessons. And we'll only have one session of that. So we, we believe that we have a good plan in place and we're ready to tackle this and get this pool open for our citizens. I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Armando, you may want to just briefly describe some of the training that has to take place that we haven't been able to do thus far in order to staff up all the lifeguards we need for the aquatic center.
Sure. It'll take about a week to get our lifeguards recertified through through the process. They'll have to get in the water, do first aid, CPR, those type of things and get certified. That's why we have, we just can't open up today. You know, yes, we were granted permission on Friday, but we have to get our staff back to work and, and trained. We also have to now train them in the COVID protocols. And so that's, that's what's going to take the longest. Thank you.
Be happy to answer any other questions that the council might have.
Just glad to hear you're able to get it open. That's good.
I do have a question, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Solis, I've been getting a lot of questions about when particular park slides and things like that are going to be open. What, what does that look like in, in terms of the ability to have kids out playing on, on those?
I honestly don't know the timeline, but Dr. Cassari from Sacramento County had sent out an email today stating that they are not allowed to be opened at this point. So they're still closed.
Okay. And, and I just have to point out that the, the, the person I heard this from is you know, the children actually live up in, in El Dorado County with totally different county, different public health doctor and then who have grandparents here in our city. And, and so that's where that came from, but I appreciate it. And if you keep updated as to that.
Yes, the second we can get them open, we will get them open.
Thanks, sir. Mr. Mayor, I have a question for Mr. Solis. I too have received, you know, inquiries as to the, to the playgrounds and the parks and things. And, and also from some coaches, you know, asking when they can start, you know, having some kind of practices for their sports. They made reference to, you know, professional sports teams being able to start doing that. But yet, you know, our children can't. And I know you don't make the rules. I know you're just following guidelines. I'm just saying this, that I acknowledge, you know, the, the public's frustration in this. And I think that it's a little, you know, inconsistent that we are allowed to have up to twelve people, you know, in a group. That's okay, but we can't have ten people on a soccer team or, you know, something, or you can't have kids play on the playground. So I just, these, these inconsistencies really baffle me. I know that a lot of us are baffled by them. Hopefully they'll just, people get on the same page soon because, you know, summer's here and kids want to be out. And we have all these facilities just sitting here with, you know, roped off and it's frustrating. So, but I think you
I'm confused by them. I'm sorry, I'm confused by them too. But know that we've specifically asked Dr. Cassari when the Sacramento area Parks and Rec Directors have met with Dr. Cassari last Thursday. And those questions that, that were brought up were asked directly to her and the answer is still no at this point. So the, you know, the questions are still being asked. We're not just sitting back, you know, waiting to, to hope. We're asking the questions and we're still being told no.
Yeah. And, and I know, and I know you are, you know, putting pressure and, and, and you're not just sitting back. I know you have in our conversation. So I appreciate your efforts. Like I said, I guess we're at the mercy of that. And so thanks again for, you know, keep babysitting this issue, Armando. That's all I have to say.
All right. Thank you. Mindo, thank you for your update on the Quad Center and Tom, thank you for your update on COVID nineteen.
You're welcome.
Counsel, before I move to the next item, I missed that item E. So on the regional board and commission, if any council member want to, any update?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, just briefly. Oh my gosh. So, so on the eighth of June, we had a policy and admission committee meeting. And that we went over some of the stuff that's going on in terms of the lobbying, lobbying efforts that are happening from, say, COG at the Capitol. They're looking at some different money coming in related to COVID, hopefully federal stimulus money for projects. And then there was quite a bit of talk about the state budget and things like that. And it sounds like yesterday, the legislature at least passed a budget. It isn't signed, but, but they met their deadline and, and did what they needed to do. So there was also So there was also a conversation about the mega region working group, which is Bay Area, the San Joaquin Valley as well as Sacramento area. So CCOG groups are getting together to kind of put their minds together about how they can do things differently as it relates to transportation, aligning projects, so that there's more bang for the buck at both the state and federal level. So that is about it.
Thank you.
And we'll hear a little later, there's an item on our agenda that is related to CCOG and we'll, we'll hear some more about, about that in a couple-
Any other council member, any? Thank you. If nobody have no comment and nothing to report, then I would like to move the next agenda item is H4. City Council Procedure Guideline Regarding Council Norm. And city want to ask, what kind of direction we are giving to the city with normal expectation? The Vice Mayor Lozano had the proposal. So Mr. Hagland or?
As the council will recall at your last meeting, we put this item off until tonight. This was an item that was brought forward at the consensus of the council to discuss potential modifications to what exists today as the city council procedural guidelines. The guidelines appear to have been originally adopted in their present form, largely their present form back in 2009. And there have been approximately six revisions to the document over the course of time. Vice Mayor Lozano had prepared a series of items for the council to review and discuss. Those are in your packet. They're the pages that immediately follow the staff report. And so we would ask the city council to consider this matter, have your, have a discussion as you desire and provide any further direction to staff.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Lozano says, as your kind of agenda, could you link to the council? What happened, why you want to make the changes, what can affect the better be and?
Yeah, but first let me start by just a slight introduction. I want to thank Mike Mulligan, obviously everyone here for allowing this item to be heard last month. And then as a continuation of this discussion, I've prepared the document for review and a listed discussion on the matter of council committee and commission member norms and expectations. I think we all might agree that it's important to have an understanding of acceptable conduct amongst our working groups and do what we can to live within those expectations. I feel it's a responsibility of the council to provide guidance on how our groups maintain decorum while meeting and while in the public. This discussion is in no way intended to point the finger at any one person or group of people for the conduct in the past. I'd like to, I'd really like to look into the future as we ponder the concepts that I've put forward and remember that we work for the citizens of Galt. And I think, and we need to think about their expectations of us, how we treat each other or colleague our colleagues on the city committees and commissions, city staff and the public is a reflection of the city. So thank you for allowing this to come forward again. I think we've all had the document that I've put forward for several weeks now and, and I hope you had an opportunity to take a look. I do want to make one modification before we begin the discussion. On the first page of the document that I provided, item 1.2.5 is proposed, the first paragraph is really redundancy of item 4.8.8. So under 1.2.5, it would start then with when possible, the council should attempt to reach consensus on the issue. That, that should be the first sentence. Everything before that should be struck and that's again, part of 4.8.8, which is already a part of our procedure. So I would, I would again, like to just say that I appreciate everybody's willingness to take a look at this. And, and I, we're up, I'd be open up for, for discussion.
Thank you. Councilmember Campion?
Yes, I've looked them over and they all seem appropriate. The only question I would ask is under that section 1.2.5. In the second sentence, it says, when it is not possible, the majority, what says council should should attempt to reach consensus on an issue, when it's not possible, the majority vote shall prevail. However, the councils should respect the opinion of the minority. I think it's as important that it include the majority so that you are looking at both sides. So I would simply add those, as well as the majority at the end of that sentence. Rest of councils, okay with that?
Councilmember Farmer?
Yeah, so I reviewed all this. I looked through it and I mean, speaking frankly, I, my issue is that there's a lot of things in here. A great deal of them, as a matter of fact, that are just kind of redundant of what was in there. I read through the thing. I think I would call some of them what I would consider go without saying. Just to maybe pull out a couple specifically such as item 3.32. Come to meetings, prepare, review and study the materials on the agenda before you come to the meeting. I mean, this is the item to me, I don't feel that we really need to put it in a handbook. I mean, it's kind of an understood thing that you should come to the meeting prepared. If I come to a meeting and I don't have my pencil and I ask someone, can I get a pencil? Now I'm like, no, I'm not prepared. So I could be like in violation of that. And it just, I mean, there's a lot of items in here that are similar to that in respects to go without saying, like item 3.38, council members have the opportunity to speak and agree to disagree. Well, obviously we have speak and disagree. That's just, it just, it doesn't really need to be clarified. Other ones, inductive members have been added such as 333, where council members should treat everyone with courtesy. I mean, we could just, I could add to that list and say that council members should, you know, always you know, be honest, or a council member should always, you know, be civil and council, I mean, we could just go on and on and on. And again, what I reiterate with that is that these are a lot of things that just go without saying. I mean, we don't need to put them in a handbook. I think the danger of taking an item that's already in the handbook that says clearly, you know, that council should refrain from abusive language, you know, things that, you know, would constitute derogatory comments, you know. I, you know, something that's inappropriate to say at another council member, those types of things. They're clearly kind of addressed in a, in a broader sense in that paragraph. And so to sit now and take that and dissect it now into all these little things where we talk about, you know, item 336, where when a rumor is involved, how we should handle that rumor, or, you know, 3.35, inappropriate behavior is derogatory. I think these things are, again, I mean, some of these things are very-
I think we lost him. Mr. Hagland, is it possible to contact him and?
Sure. I don't have a response yet, but were there any comments from any other council members that we wanted to proceed with? And then when Sean reconnects, we can have him continue.
I do think-
He's gonna, he's gonna call in. He lost his internet somehow. Let me get him the number. Okay, he should be calling in. Rose, he'll pop up as a phone number there.
I'm waiting for him.
He's almost there. Okay, I think that's him.
Hello? Can you guys hear me?
Yep, we can.
Okay, so I apparently internet's down where I'm at. So sorry to interrupt it. Just to get to the point, so I've been watching some council meetings and I, and I think what I would like to suggest is that we really need to, I think, be following Robert's Rules of Order a little more closely, especially in respects to speaking. And I, and I know I've been trying to do that over the last meeting regards to everything flowing through the mayor. So if I want to comment on or respond back to someone or speak, I would ask the mayor's permission, may I speak? And then he grants that permission. This would clearly avoid, you know, situations where we have council members that would speak over each other and, and have, you know, uncontrolled dialogue. I think it would also be, you know, give each other respect in that manner and, and give each other their allowed time to speak. That, that would be my main suggestion. I think that, you know, and this protocol already exists. So all we would be doing would be to, you know, stepping back and saying, this is what we need to be doing and we need to be following this. But as far as, and some other things like, I, you know, I, I think that, you know, I think we've kind of got a little bit relaxed in calling each other, you know, Paige and Paul and Rich and Kurt and Sean and so on. I think, you know, we all need to be a little better about respecting each other and the respect by calling, you know, someone councilman or councilwoman, so and so, and so forth. And I think, you know, letting the mayor, you know, get his due respect. I think if we were to really focus more on that and try, and what I mean by try is you know, not make it some kind of rule and try to form some kind of guideline that we're, you know, like a handbook or try to change what, what's already there. Just, you know, use our own discretion as adults to, to try to abide in a more respectful manner. But I just think, again, some of these things in here are just, they go without saying. I think a lot of them are subjective. I think some of them are very dangerous, can really kind of infringe on people's right to free speech and things like that. And I just, I think to, to consider passing all of this like it is, it would be, you know, a kind of a dangerous precedent. So that's my comments at the moment. I would like to turn it over to anybody else that wants to speak now. Thank you.
Councilmember Lanson?
Yeah, I think as things change and social media and the 2020 changes, that we do need an update. We need to look at this every once in a while and update. And I don't believe we've had an update since I've been on council. I haven't seen anything that Rich, the council member Lozano, or Vice Mayor Lozano, sorry, is asking for that is out of the ordinary. And sometimes you do have to make some clear definition. Look at all of our things we do. That's just the verbiage is very extensive. So that way there leaves no doubt.
Thank you. You know, I was looking at the proposal by the Vice Mayor Lozano. Half of the points is already in a procedural guideline. And we are, is almost redoing the copy. And, and the other thing is if you look up every step by step, we already doing as my responsibility as a mayor and every, all the council member as their responsibility. And there is, yes, there is a few things. You know, I'm talking about there is, I should not, I'm not going to support on some of that. But my thing is, this is the first time change regarding, regarding the council member. There is a seven or six changes, but that not, they have no change here regarding the act of body, conduct of membership, council, conduct one another. And I believe in all, every council member is very responsible person. They treat everybody as the dignity and respect. And I don't see any council member is not treating each other without dignity and respect. So when the other thing, if there is any change and even look at the previous change, it usually going by the unanimous. Think that's why I'm looking for something. If there can be any change, it should be a unanimous or not with the majority vote, because it can come back to us. And a brother council member want to make a comment? Go ahead. And uh, if other council member wanna make a comment, uh, go ahead. Vice Mayor Lozano.
I, I'd like to comment if no one else is gonna go again.
Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, yeah, I just, you know, again, the changes that have been made in the past, I reviewed through them and they're all changes about policy, meaning, you know, uh, term of the mayor from one year to two years in the back and, and we were gonna do this or that with the commissions. But there was no, there was no, anything that I could find, anything that really started getting into the weeds about, you know, how, uh, you know, a council member should talk about that or this, or, you know, how he should dress and how he should, you know, address this or that, or when he's speaking. I mean, a lot of the things that I think should be-
We lost him again.
Well, until he gets back, well, I, I don't know whether I should wait for him to come back or not then.
Yeah, go ahead, councilmember.
You know, I, I've looked at it and, you know, after hearing what Sean says, uh, and what others have said, you know, I still look at, you know, th- there are some in here, like, I, I, I happen to agree with at least uh, pretty strongly uh, the first two items, 1.2.3 and 1.2.4. Um, I know for a fact in the past that, you know, this deals with council members shall represent the official position or positions of the city council when designated as delegates for that purpose. Well, I understand that. Um, and I, I'm not aware of that necessarily being an issue, but when representing uh, their own individual positions, council members should explicitly state that they do not represent the city council of the city, nor do they allow uh, that inference uh, that they do. And I think that's important because, you know, when in the public, uh, you know, you may have your own uh, personal opinion, but if, if a vote has been taken and, and if you follow even what is in the guidelines, established guidelines, you should be supporting whatever that decision was. So I, to that extent, I think that, that has merit and should be included. You know, some of the others, I, I think some of them, I take 3.3.5. It's more of a statement. It says inappropriate behavior is derogatory damages to perception of the city. Well, doesn't necessarily say that it's i- it should state that, you know, you should not do that. Well, I do agree that that, that is a common sense issue. For the first two items though, I do believe that there is a place in this document for them. And to a certain degree, even the third one, 1.2.2.5, which was, that talked about uh, uh, reaching consensus and if the consensus has not reached, you should still show respect, which follows somewhat the first two, or at least the, the second. So I, I think I, I find value in those. Um, you know, I, I, I'm not, uh, you know, gonna, you know, gonna go have a hard time either way, but I think there is room for improvement. Whether it is all of these, maybe not, but I think there are certain of them that uh, would benefit the city. So I, you know, I, I don't know that we're gonna come to conclusion tonight. I think, you know, what I would suggest is maybe uh, a couple of council members get together, go over this list and really drill down on those which they think are appropriate and would be beneficial um, as a, as a compromise rather than taking it as an all or nothing here tonight. So, uh, I don't know, Rich, how you feel about that, but uh, I, I think that's reasonable at this point if we do have, you know, some disagreement at this point.
Yeah, yeah, and I, and, and I would agree with uh, Mayor Sandu to some degree that, you know, this should be something we all buy into. Uh, you know, honestly, the last time I officially looked at the um, procedural guidelines for council, uh, which although, I, I might add, um, really filters down to our committees and commission members as well um, by way of uh, the document. And so, um, the last time I saw that was when I had my introductory, I mean officially, uh, my introductory meeting with the, with the city manager when I was first elected, and that was a year and a half ago. Uh, you know, my, 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 I guess part of my issue is, is that we may, I think that's something we need to talk about ever, maybe once a year when we change over the guard, you know, and, and December, we have the conversations about, um, you know, what, what procedural guidelines, um, you know, we need to remember to follow and, and, um, you know, it's just, uh, I think, I think that's important to have those conversations and um, and, and I certainly agree, Councilman Campion, that we're, we're not gonna get, you know, this isn't something we're gonna resolve tonight. Uh, but I would be happy to work with any one particular council member, because we can't have more than that uh, on the list. And, you know, the, the, the proposal is pretty, pretty all encompassing, um, and, and a lot to, to wrap your head around. And so, the one thing that Councilman Farmer said that I think was, is, is probably appropriate is, you know, having, you know, getting back to uh, really um, being aware, I guess, of the, the rules of order and things like that. I think that's important. And uh, and so, um, you know, a- again, it just comes back to ensuring that we can be the, the most professional as we can and, and at least acknowledging, acknowledging that. So I'd be, like I said, I'd be willing to work with any one particular. Um, I think, uh, Councilman Farmer, when you say that things should go without saying, I, I, I would agree that that should be the case, but uh, you know, over my, over my professional career, I have supervised uh, many people in the public sector and, and that isn't always the case. So, um, but, but, you know, I think there's room for discussion on it and, uh, but I, I, I would, uh, I would submit that, um, I would, I would love to take a volunteer. Um, hearing the concerns tonight, maybe ask staff to incorporate, um, you know, the, the items that have been proposed in the, in the actual handbook, so we can take a look at it all at once. Um, and, and, and then kind of move from there. And I'd, I'd be, I'd be good with that.
If I can- I'm back on the call now, and then when everybody's done, I'd like to speak again.
Well, well, when I was gonna, I'm gonna volunteer you, Sean, to, to meet with Rich, because uh, I, I don't know how much you heard what we discussed, but, but we thought maybe it might be beneficial to have a couple council members sit down and go over this list, because I, I, I believe there are a few that are, that do have merit. And, and maybe between you and Rich, uh, come back uh, with a, a list that maybe you two can agree to.
I, I did hear all that, um, Councilman Campion, and uh, and I, and I, I'm not opposed to that idea. I, I appreciate, I, I would actually appreciate being that person, I think, because I think that maybe Rich and I are kind of maybe on the far ends of the spectrum, not, not far ends of the spectrum, but I think out of all five of us, we would be the two that would probably need to come to a compromise the most for this to be something that, you know, all of us could support. And I, and I, again, I think, uh, you know, I appreciate your comments, um, uh, Vice Mayor Lozano about, about the uh, Robert's Rules of Order and, and importance. I think that's a big piece of that, trying to get back to not having a, you know, loose dialogue. But I think that, yeah, I think we need to sit down and kind of see, you know, some of these maybe are a redundancy of others. Some of them, I, I have, you know, some issues with the way they're worded, infringing on, you know, free speech and some things that, that could really be really hard to enforce or interpret, and they're just a little too vague. So if we could sit down and we can hammer out, you know, sit down at some point, you and I, and, and I could, you know, we can both have some time to kind of sit down and take notes, and then we can share our notes and kind of go back and forth and talk item by item, see if we can some, you know, come to a compromise, because that's what council's about, is compromise. And uh, I, I would be open to that, so.
Yeah, absolutely. I, 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 I agree. I think, um, and, and I don't think we're that far off, uh, Councilman Farmer. I, I really don't. I think that, um, I think we can get there. Um, I, I, and I'm available, uh, not, not this week at all, but uh, anytime next week, so uh, we'll get, and we, if, if everybody else is agreeable, I, I think we could get together and-
You know, sir-
Yeah, so, go ahead, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, the certainty, that's idea, that's why Mike said that we wanna build a team. We don't wanna be so. I like to, that's exactly, and the two council member, they sit down, they discuss each other, and bring a something narrative to us. And I certainly, I don't think so, any council member, uh, including myself, we wanna, not wanna do the right thing. We wanna do the right thing. So if anything, you know, there is, there is, I, I, I said that by really, there is some i- it's duplicate, and especially when two council members sit down, they use both of their intelligency. I think we bring a very brief report. I certainly hold counsel, uh, we will, uh, go forth. And then, uh, we will bring, uh, that whenever you guys decided, uh, we can bring, uh, to the future.
Thank, thank you, Mayor. I, I, I don't know that Sean, or the Councilman Farmer and I will have much intelligence between the two of us, but, but I think we could get it put together and, uh, and, uh, and so, i- i- is it, I mean, is it okay to ask staff to, to put it, to put the proposal within uh, the current document, so, uh, Councilman Farmer and I can go through and, and find those redundancies and things like that?
Are you, are you talking about a red line version then, creating a red line version with the, the new versus what exists today?
Absolutely, and there's no intention on my part to have, uh, I mean, I recognize that some of these items on here uh, may not work. And, and so my intention really is just to be able to look at it. Uh, and if, if, you know, if, uh, half a dozen of the, of the items are in there at the end, then they, then they are. And if not, you know, we'll, we'll work on that. But that would be my, my preference. I'm more of a-
Actually, when the two council member, they can work as like an ad hoc committee. So I'm full confident between both of you spend some time and bring something is very clean, so hopefully all are agree. And that thing I mentioned, oh, this is belong to the council, especially I like to something pass is unanimous. Not, not just two and three vote or two and one more.
I, I would agree that it would, it would be absolutely nice to have uh, everybody on board, and I think we can get there. Although I don't want to, uh, to, uh, you know, make the public believe that we are, uh, not having full discussion on the item and just coming up with a, uh, with the amount of lead or so. You know, we'll, I, I will get there. I, and, and again, I think we, I think Councilman Farmer and I could do that.
Yeah, so Vice Mayor, um, I agree that next week's busy and plus we have with our, our city manager interviewing going on. I, I would like to maybe, if there's something, maybe we could get together, maybe the week after this coming, um, and maybe you and I could go through and then we can, um, if we can come up with something that we can present to council, maybe, uh, you know, if not the first week of July, maybe the second meeting in July after the holidays over, something we can present the council with something, so that they can look through what you and I have come up with and see if they have any concerns with any additional items. Then we kind of narrow it down to, to, you know, um, you know, what their thoughts are, and then we can hopefully get a consensus or something at that point. So, um, maybe the week after next or something?
Yeah, absolutely. I'm, I'm, I'm really flexible in my schedule, um, during the summertime, so just, uh, you know, reach out with a, with a couple dates and we'll do that.
Okay, all right, I'm fine with that. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. If we agree, then I'm going to move in the next item.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Uh, Mayor? A public comment on that item?
Oh, you don't?
I have my hand up a bunch of times.
All right, go ahead, uh, Lanson.
Yeah, I just want to encourage them to not just think for this council, but think for future councils. Um, it may not have been an issue on this council, but I've seen a lot of other councils where they have issues. So don't just think in the moment, think in the future.
Thank you. Any public comment?
Uh, I did receive written comment from Jay Vandenberg. Uh, the council meeting on May 19th, 2020 did get a bit contentious because of people's passion. In hindsight, it could have been handled better by multiple parties. I much prefer passionately from all parties as opposed to a council of automatons. Below are some thoughts on the proposed changes on the city council procedural guidelines. To save space and time, I did not type out each item, but rather just reference the code number. Item 1.2.3, this already goes without saying and is a repeat of 1.2.1. Item 1.2.4, is this not giving permission to break rule 1.2.3? Item 1.2.5, first half, this is just reiterating rule 1.2.1 and 4.8.8. Second half, this is precisely what the existing, existing discussions are for. Item 1.2.6, this is already required by procedure. It is precisely the reason for city council meetings in the first place and why we have the Brown Act, so that discussion decisions are not made in private. Item 3.3.2, this is already expected. Is someone going to provide quizzes before each council meeting to provide this? If not, is it even enforceable? Item 3.3.3, this is a repeat of 3.3.1. Also using the word should is suggestive, not directive. Consider replacing the word should for shall. Item 3.3.4, this is redundancy of the provo- proposed item of 1.2.6. And again, uses the suggestive words should instead of a directive word such as shall. Item 3.3.5, this is an opinion, not a rule. Individual opinions are proposed to be removed in 1.2.4. Item 3.3.6, who will decide what is rumor and what is not? This would also be a restriction on an individual constitutional right of freedom of speech. I believe this is also already addressed in 3.5.1. Item 3.3.7, as stated, this is an opinion, not a rule. Item 3.3.8, this is, goes without saying. This happens in every council meeting. It is the entire purpose of a discussion. Item 3.3.9, as stated, this is an opinion, not a rule. Moreover, if one member does not like the other, they can claim that everything is offensive. Denying the other person's right to speak, consider something to the effect of at no time shall council members make personal derogatory comments toward other council members, although normal civility would already account for this. Item 3.3.1.0, as stated, this is an opinion, not a rule. Perhaps the city council should look into accepting the more formal parliamentary procedures to resolve this. Item 3.3.1.1, the rule 1.4.2 already states that the mayor is the official head of the city for all ceremonial purposes. Item 4.1.3, again, perhaps the city council should consider formally adopting Robert's Rules of Order, which is parliamentary procedure. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anybody on the Zoom bed?
I have no raised hand at this time.
Thank you. Any council member, any discussion? If it's not, then I'm going to move in the next agenda item. Next agenda item is H5, Finance Department, Central Square Solution Agreement Extension. Ms. Tyson.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Before you tonight is the agreement with Central Square. This is involving the financial system that the city has had since 2005. The difference is Central Square is the new owner of this product. Previously, it was owned by Superior, Sun Guard. Um, it's, it's commonly known as the HTE Public Administration product. So this is a, a three-year contract with Central Square. It's really an extension of the prior contract, but with a new company name on it. And, um, it, it has additional, uh, extensions as needed. Central Square is the sole source provider for this particular product. Um, and so before you tonight is this contract for your consideration and approval. Any questions that I might be able to answer?
Councilmember Farmer.
Yes, thanks. Um, and I'm back. It was good. Why I missed those live meetings, Tom, I'm telling you. Claire, I just had a question. This is the company we've been in contract for a while, and, and what was the length of that contract previously? I'm sorry, I didn't see it.
Um, the Superior contract, I believe, was a three-year with multiple extensions also.
So we exhausted all those extensions and now we're at a point where we need to re-up the contract?
Well, no, the Central Square company bought it out.
Okay, okay, all right. Then that's, I don't have any questions other than that.
Thank you. Councilmember Lanson. Councilmember Campion. Vice Mayor Lozano.
I have no questions. Thank you.
Thank you. I have no question either. I did the report and this we needed. So thank you, Ms. Tyson.
You're welcome.
Any public comment?
I have not received any public comment.
And I I have no raised hands at this time.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Vice Mayor Lozano, second by Councilmember Campion. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Vice Mayor Lozano?
Aye.
Councilmember Farmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Lamson? Aye. Mayor Sandu?
Aye. Motion passed with five two zero. Thank you. Next agenda item is Public Works Department, Consultant Contract Award for Walker Park Phase Two. Mr. Selling.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. This item before you is for consulting engineering services to develop concepts, conduct outreach and design for phase two improvements of the Walker Park. Late last year, through Assemblymember Cooper's office, the city received a state grant for one point, seven million dollars to make improvements to Walker Park. Specifically in seeking the grant, the city identified the need for additional restrooms, parking, extension of the access roadway and rough grading for three baseball softball fields. These improvements will be designed to minimize ongoing operations and maintenance costs. The city issued a request for proposals and the city received two responses. After evaluating the proposals and conducting interviews of the firms, staff recommends awarding this contract to Somas for three hundred and sixty thousand dollars, three hundred, three hundred and seventy four dollars. Additionally, the effort will require an amendment to the environmental impact report that was done for the Walker Park master plan. This work will be done by the community development department's on-call consultant, Rainy Planning and Management, and is expected not to exceed six thousand dollars. This concludes my comments and I'm available to answer any questions.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Lozano.
Yeah, just just a couple of quick comments. Do we not have anyone in-house that can perform these these functions?
No, we don't. Our staff are basically already assigned to other projects. And and there is some expertise involved as far as park design, so.
And I appreciate that. And and the other question is, is the technical piece of, well, let me ask this. This is going to get us through a a full design of 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 the new Walker Park? Or is it going to just take care of up through the environmental impact report? Or how's that work?
So what this will do, the grant money that we got, the one point, seven million from the state parks, there's a there's a timeline on that that we have to complete the improvements by the end of twenty twenty one. And so this will basically satisfy those grant requirements. It will we'll end up with is we should have, like I mentioned, rough grading for the three ball fields. We would have the access road extension. We would have an unimproved parking surface, likely gravel or something like that, not cave. And then we would have the bathroom facilities. So it wouldn't be a final design of the ball fields. I'm not sure if you were asking that specifically.
Yes, yeah, okay. I appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Sure.
Councilmember Campion.
I have no comments this time.
Thank you. Councilmember Lamson. Thank.
Hold on, I'm having trouble in muting for some strange reason. Yeah, I'm glad we're going with the restroom as a priority. If you've ever been out there during a soccer game, the referees don't even have time to use the restroom in between games. The line is so long, so much needed and very exciting.
Thank you. Councilmember Farmer.
Nothing other than just excited to see this project start to move forward. So I don't have any questions.
Thank you. Mr. Selling, the only my question is that firm, we're going to, this is a consultant firm? Or they're going to design and how far is we'll cover by three hundred and sixty thousand dollars?
So, yeah, they are a consulting firm and they will basically, I got, I mentioned, their scope is to develop up to three concepts for the layout. The master plan for the park that was done a number of years ago is going to require some modification to incorporate the three ball fields. And we'll probably have to realign the roadway a bit and probably adjust the parking. I think if you looked at the concept layout, there was two ball fields and there was a parking area. And now we're looking at three, so they've got to do some adjustments for that, come up with a few concepts. We'll do some outreach to try to get, you know, community input and whatnot consensus. And and then they will do the the rough design as far as the ball fields go. But then we can include the the design grading for the roadway and parking area. And then obviously the final design for the restrooms, because that will be a a final, you know, constructed facility as part of the grant.
Thank you. Any public comment?
I have not received any public comment.
And I have no raised hands.
Thank you. The recommended action adopted resolution approving a consultant contract award to some in the amount of three hundred and sixty, three seventy four for Walker Park Phase Two Improvement Capital Improvement Project CIP six one nine B. Do we have a motion to approve that action?
Moved.
Moved by Vice Mayor Lozano.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Campion. Tina, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Vice Mayor Lozano?
Aye.
Councilmember Farmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Lamson? Aye. Mayor Sandu?
Aye. Motion carry for five two zero. Thank you. Next agenda item is H seven Sacramento Area Council of Government Regional Funding Policy and Process Revision. Mr. Selling.
Thank you again, Mayor and council members. The item for your consideration is to provide direction to staff to work with the Sacramento Area Council of Governments or SECOG to seek desired changes to its funding policy and process. SECOG is responsible for the region's long range transportation plan, which is called the Metropolitan Transportation Plan slash Sustainable Community Strategy, or the acronym is MTPSCS. You'll see that in the staff report. And and SECOG receives the region's share of state and federal regional transportation funds. Despite the funds being allocated to SECOG on a population or a share population and combination road mileage basis by county area, SECOG has programmed these funds on a one hundred percent competitive basis since two thousand and two. While this is intended to fund the best projects, it makes it very difficult for agencies to plan for projects due to the uncertainty of receiving funds. In addition, the process has become increasingly complex and data-driven, which translates to the need for additional staff time and outside assistance to prepare these applications. The process also utilizes a SECOG-selected scoring committee, which has frequently recommended funding for lower priority projects and encouraged agencies to add unnecessary enhancements to score higher. Overall, a fully competitive process effectively prioritizes larger projects and pits agencies against each other for the available funding rather than encouraging collaboration. The attached proposal outlines several changes to the process, which will effectively first streamline it by reducing complexity and data demands. Second, allow for agencies to prioritize their projects and have greater input in the process. And third, reestablish a formulaic or guaranteed funding element while retaining a competitive portion of the funding for for competitive as they currently do. Over the past several months, staff from the four county agencies, and that is Sacramento County, Yuba County, Sutter County and Yolo County, have met with SECOG staff to discuss the need for changes to the existing process and presented the attached proposal to them. While SECOG staff have acknowledged the need to streamline the application and data demands of the process, they have expressed strong concern to allowing any of the funding to be distributed on a formulaic or guaranteed basis and simply remain staunch that the process continue to be one hundred percent competitive. In an effort to validate and elevate the need to make changes to the funding process, several agencies are bringing this to their city council or board of supervisors to consider formally directing staff to work with SECOG to address deficiencies in the process and better serve the region and our respective communities. To date, for Sacramento County, Elk Grove and Folsom have already passed a similar resolution to the one we brought in tonight. Citrus Heights, Ranch of Cordova and Sacramento County are all also planning to bring a similar item to their governing bodies for consideration in the coming weeks. This concludes my remarks and I'm available to answer any questions.
Vice Mayor Lozano.
Sorry about that. Yeah, I just just a couple of comments. I've been working with Mr. Selling over the last several months on this issue. You know, the the reality is, is that the application process, my understanding is, at least, can be very cumbersome. It is a hundred percent competitive. I will say this, it's not, it's my understanding that, you know, we have received funds from SECOG. We, as you may remember, there is, there was a time where we have, we're having trouble spending it and and really had to get it, get on the ball and get it done. So we have received funds. I think that the linchpin for me is, and then talking to Mr. Selling is, is and my colleagues on, some of my colleagues on the SECOG board is that, you know, we're tying up money, matching funds within our own organization to some degree, waiting to hear if we're going to be, you know, successful in that one hundred percent competitive process. And so I think it's important that at least a, at least a piece of the funds that are available be delivered on a formula basis that uses population and and and, you know, for the smaller degree mileage used. And I think it's important that that we do that. Now, I will say this, it it's, SECOG is absolutely a regional organization. And I think it's still important to, even though we are pretty far in the south part of the the boundary of SECOG, to be a part of those conversations about regional projects and things like that. So I I do see the the value in continuing to do that. I do support Mr. Selling and and the group in in trying to move forward and 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 minimize the amount of time it takes to do an application for the competitive process, but then also trying to use some formula to to get some money rolling in, so we're not tying up our funds. So I just wanted to say, make those comments. Mr. Selling is is much more attuned to the actual issue as it relates to this. But I can certainly try to help answer any questions as well. And that's it.
Thank you. Councilmember Campion.
Yeah, I I I have a question, because I I can't tell from this and I probably should have called staff ahead of time, but my only concern with this, I mean, I I agree, if we can streamline it and and utilize our matching funds, that makes complete sense. Would this in any way affect our ability? I mean, I can think of the Walnut Interchange Project, for example. I know when we did the A Street Overpass, A C Street, we were able to get advanced funding, you know, which was our share that we would have received over time. Would this process in any way eliminate that possibility for advanced funding? Or would it simply be advanced funding based on this new formula of allocation?
You know, without getting, well, depending on how they would end up, you know, working this potentially, it could, is the answer. It would be, actually, it'd probably be more advantageous if we could get some funding that was formulaically driven. So that way we could keep the process, we would have funds to keep the process going. As you probably well, we're council member, it takes several years to deliver an interchange project. And and so consequently, to have that, you know, constant source that you know you can program against, you know, whether it's you're using your own staff and or some combination with consultants to do that preliminary environmental work, design work, right away acquisition, all those things, final design, and then obviously ultimately construction. But if you know you've got a certain amount of money coming in, and then you can also compete on the, for the competitive portion of the pot and and other potentially, you know, grant sources. So it it would likely be more advantageous, I guess, is the is the short answer.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Lamson.
I don't have any more questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Farmer.
Yeah, just a couple of questions. Obviously, I would refer to Rich on his take on this, being that he's been our SECOG liaison and has been kind of close, as close to this as if any, as any of us have been. So I appreciate his comments. My only question would be, if we don't designate someone, it sounds to me like other municipalities are going to be bringing someone to the table to do this. So if we don't do this, then there's going to be decisions and and things made without our input. Right? Is that the way I'm understanding it?
Yeah, it would, it would likely, there could potentially be an ad hoc committee or something at the SECOG board member level. But this is essentially formalizing the process that's been going on for the last several months, council member. And 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 it would also help send a message to SECOG staff that that this is, you know, something that the agencies think very seriously and are really, you know, wanting to affect some some change in the process.
Okay. And my next question would be to Tom, or or maybe you can answer it, Mike. So it says to designate the city manager or another designate. So who are we thinking is going to be that designate? It says staff. Is that going to be you, Mike? Or who we think's the best to do that?
We, I've I've been participating with my fellow, you know, directors of transportation, public works directors. You know, if Tom feels comfortable, the other thing too, the possibility is, is it may elevate to the city managers or county executives possibly. And so it it may be him, but I'll defer to Tom. He has any other thoughts?
Well, I think that, yeah, what you typically see in this language is is pretty standard. Mike's right, that it may at some point become a city manager, county exec, general manager-driven process or or involved process, I should say. The real drivers, though, are folks like Mike. And so even with this pretty standard recommendation, my designate would be Mike Selling and and less than until some time that I would need to become involved.
I I would, I would be in favor of that only because too, I don't know how quickly this is going to start up in this. But we have, then there's a a matter of of consistency, meaning that we are in the process of possibly, possibly changing city manager. So if Mike was in there, then that's a consistent role. And then at some point, if it transitions to city manager, then the new person could come on that. So I would like to keep that continuity there.
Right.
Thank you, Sean. I have no question. Any public comment?
No public comment.
Okay, go ahead, Vice Mayor Lozano.
I'm sorry, I I the timeline on this, and and again, I'm just totally guestimating here. SECOG has a break in July, and I suspect that between now and our next, well, we have a meeting this week, but after this meeting, we don't come back until, I believe, August. And so I believe what's, what will probably happen is at least there'll be a city manager or county briefing on it. And and again, this, you know, this is not an issue that is something. And, and again, this, you know, this is not an issue that is something that the CACOG board as a whole is all going to agree on because there are other, other interests out there in terms of keeping it the way it is. Sorry about that, guys. My lighting here is fading. So, so, but, but again, I would say that Mr. Selling's work with the other directors has been very fruitful, and at least have this discussion would be, would be advantageous. So Councilman Farmer, timing probably going to be late August, September, I would imagine, before a, a decision's made by the CACOG board. So we have some time, and this work is, already has some momentum going. And, and as you heard, the city of Elk Grove and Folsom have already had something like this in front of their councils, and then, you know, the county as well as the other, Ranch Grove and Citrus Heights will as well. So, you know, it's good work that they're doing. As you know, I'm one to always look at things and see what we can do to improve, and keeping everything on the table. I think that's, this is a good discussion to have at CACOG level.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Selling. Thank you, Vice Mayor Lozano. You are heavily involved on CACOG. Thank you. If nobody has no question, then I'm going to, to recommended action. Adopted resolution authorizing and attracting the city manager for designate to work with the Sacramento Area Council of Government, CACOG, to make revision to improve its regional funding policy and related process. Now I will entertain the motion.
I, I would like to move this on.
Okay, moved by Vice Mayor Lozano.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Campion. Tina, we do have a roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Lozano.
Aye.
Councilmember Farmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Campion.
Aye.
Councilmember Lamson.
Aye.
Mayor Sandu.
Aye. Motion pass by five two zero. Thank you, everybody. Next agenda item is communication. Tina, there's no communication, right?
Correct.
And it's the city clerk's report.
All right. So this recommendation is to review the applications and consider appointments to the four vacant positions on the Measure R Independent Citizens Oversight Committee. The Measure R Independent Citizens Oversight Committee has four vacancies appointed by the entire city council with one term ending April 2021 and three terms ending April 2023. Galt Municipal Code Section 3.40.150 states, no committee member may serve more than two consecutive three-year terms. Ralph Cortez was appointed in 2014 and reappointed in 2017, and therefore not eligible to reapply. Tina Talamontes was appointed in 2017, and her application for reappointment is attached. Matthew Shelton was also appointed in 2017, but he chose not to reapply. The term ending 2021 was from a committee member's dismissal in September 2019. The city clerk's office advertised the vacancies on the city's website and social media. One application for the term ending April 2021 was eventually received on March 3, 2020, and the other three applications were received in May 2020. The applications received were from Tony Lara, Tina Talamontes, Jay Vandenberg, Terry Cooley. And again, these are appointed by the entire city council. So do you have any questions?
Tina, how it work? We have to vote on or just consent?
No, you have to, the entire city council has to vote on the four applicant.
Tina?
Yes.
The, so out of the four seats, there's four applicants. So one applicant ends, you said, April 21, and the others would go on till when?
April 2023. They're three-year appointments.
Okay. So if we, if we approve any of these applicants, do we designate which one is in which role? Or is it just, how do we do that?
Well, when we did start advertising in September of 2019 for the term ending April 2021, we did get the application from Tony Lara on March 3, and then the other applicants we did not receive until we advertised for the April 2023 position.
So then they would fall into those roles accordingly?
Well, I think you could, you could appoint anyone at any, at any level. I, I don't think there's any restriction.
Okay. Well, I looked over the applicants, I mean, they all looked like, I mean, their reasoning seemed okay. A couple of them seemed really qualified, so, but I, I mean, I don't really have a problem with any of the four personally, but I just had that question about, you know, the dates of appointment and their terms, so.
I might like to consider leaving them open a little longer, especially since we got that public comment about how people haven't been able to apply. I know Mr. Laura applied back in March, and that was for the exited position. I would be willing, you know, we could put him in and then maybe look for some more, make sure it's open. I don't know what you guys think.
I would agree with you, Paige.
How long was it advertised for, Tina?
It's been advertised since September, and then once we, for the 2021 position, and then once we knew terms were ending in April, we did start advertising in April.
How long ago is that for the other three?
A couple of months ago, but then COVID hit and all that, so.
Yeah, I mean, I, I would, I wouldn't be opposed to going ahead and pointing Tony Lara to the position being that he applied so far back, and he's been waiting all this long. I think if we're gonna, if we're gonna not appoint the other three, when is the next Measure R meeting?
It is July 22.
Okay, so my problem would be that, you know, we haven't had a Measure R meeting in a long time. If that meeting goes according to schedule, we won't even have a core, we won't even have but two people on there. So that would be a concern. So I think we should, is there time enough for us to defer this appointment until, and have enough time to make that next meeting, Tom?
Well, and the other thing we could do is we could move that meeting into August if you wanted to say, consider an appointment at the end of, or at the second meeting of July or something like that.
Well, I wouldn't want to bump the meeting. So I mean, it's been forever since they had one, if I'm not mistaken. So I, I don't know if I want to do that. I just, I want to allow more time for people to apply, but I also don't want to jeopardize the next meeting because of attendance or because of the site, the timing of the applicants. If we did like another two-week stint, that would, what, put us into, that would put us into the first part of July, and the second meeting in July. When's the second council meeting in July?
The 21st, actually, the day before.
Day before this Measure R, but they wouldn't be able to be sworn in and all that in time. There's no way, right?
Yeah, they would, yeah, they would have to be for their, on the 22nd or that night, right?
Yeah, you could have a swearing in on, at that meeting on the 22nd.
What was the dates of the other applicants besides Mr. Lara? What were the, the other three, were they all received around the same time, or was there an order?
Within a couple of weeks of each other in May, May 7th, May, and May 21st.
Can they have a Measure R meeting with just two members?
They can have a, a meeting of the committee of the whole. So it's, they can't take an action, but they can certainly have a meeting.
Mr. Mayor, can I offer something up here? You know, I'm kind of on the same page that it would be nice to, to see if we can get a few more applica, applications. And, and I think Mr. Laura put in and, 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 you know, has been waiting and waiting. I'd be in favor of appointing him and then maybe also appointing Tina Talamontes tonight as she, this is a renewal for her, and she's been on the, on the committee and, and then waiting until a repost happened and then going from there.
I would, I would, I would be in agreement with that. Councilmember Lozano.
I would be in agreement with that, Council, Vice Mayor Lozano.
I would be in agree with that on one contingency that we set forth a time, how much longer we're going to advertise the position for, to push it out.
I, I would submit that we just do it until, so we can make an appointment on the, the July 21st council meeting. So whatever, back that up to whatever time Ms. Hubert needs to, to get it processed.
I would be in favor of that, then. We, go ahead and appoint the two people that Vice Mayor specified and, and pushed to have it on the agenda for the second meeting in July to make an appointment at that time for the other two.
Then how many weeks we're going to extend that advertised two weeks?
Yes, we could, well, sorry.
Actually, if you're going to make the appointment in July, you could extend it all the way up until, say, the, the 10th or of July or something, which would give us time to then get the, all the applications on the, the agenda for the council packet delivery on the 16th of July. So you might as well use as much time as you possibly have, you know, if you're going to consider them at the second meeting, July.
Yeah, thank you. And I'm agree with that, you know.
Do you need a motion for that?
Yes, the entire city council needs to nominate and approve that Tony Lara and Tina Talamontes.
And, and just to clarify that, I think that the council was considering Tony Lara for the, to fill the remainder term, and Talamontes would continue on with a, a new term of office.
I would make that as a motion.
Second.
I had a question too, for a public comment. Since it did come in as planning commission, but it's referenced from Randy at Galt Fitness Pro, but it's referenced for the four new spots. Do you want me to reread the public comment under the Measure R, or you're aware of it?
Not necessary for me.
Okay. I'm aware of it.
Okay.
All right, so motion move my council member Campion, and second by Vice Mayor Lozano. Tina, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Vice Mayor Lozano.
Aye.
Councilmember Farmer. Councilmember Campion.
Aye.
Councilmember Lamson.
Aye.
Mayor Sandu.
Aye. Motion passed by five two zero. Thank you. Comment by staff, Mr. Haglen.
I'd like to first ask if Chief Sockman has any staff comments.
I think that the only comments I might want to add is that, you know, obviously it's been a very trying time in our nation regionally, and we've had some protests in Galt. They've all been peaceful. I appreciate that. It's there, you know, and our staff has been working with the organizers of the protests and everything to make sure that it's peaceful. So I just want to thank the community, and I know that our police staff has been working a lot of long hours, so I just want to thank them for all the hard work and dedication to the city.
Thank you. Public Works Director Selling.
No, not really much. Looking forward to the upcoming Heroes event, though, and seeing Wally lit up. Thanks.
Community Development Director Arias.
Yeah, I just want to point out to the council members that we did put three environmental documents in your boxes. We have three secret documents out for public review. They're all pertaining to annexation projects. We have the Notch Annexation and the Simmerhorn Ranch Development by Elliott. We have the Fairway Oaks and the Island Annexation, and then also the Summerfield Development north of Twin Cities. So those are just out for public review. We do have a schedule for public meetings and public hearings for each project. I did put the draft schedule in the city manager biweekly. So if you have any questions on the schedule or the documents, please just give me a call.
Thank you. Finance Director Tyson.
Nothing further to report. Thank you.
Economic Development Manager Mendez.
She bailed on you.
Yeah, she may have. That's okay. She works hard. Parks and Recreation Director Solis.
No, I have nothing at this time. Thank you.
All right. City Clerk Hubert.
Yes, I just wanted to thank the city council and the city manager for the opportunity this evening. I truly appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. And then finally, our city attorney, Kimberly Hood.
I don't have anything further to add. We're just watching the governor and the legislature try to finalize the budget and figuring out what type, what portion of the CARES Act money may come from the state down to smaller cities, but we'll keep you posted.
Thank you, and I have nothing further. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you. Comment by city council.
Yes, just a couple of things really quick. I, I too, Mr. Haglen would love to see what we can do to pursue getting back in council chambers. I think it's important for the public to be able to come and live in person, and it just makes it a little better in terms of the appearance of transparency. And, and so I know it's been trying times, and you know, everyone's working hard on it, but I, I'm tired of looking like a jaundice baby on this thing with the lighting. So anytime we can get back into the chambers, that would be awesome. The other thing is, I did start to read through the secret documents, and, and Mr. Rice, I will probably be reaching out because there's some things in there that I, I don't quite understand, so I appreciate it if, if I could meet. The other thing is, is how much information do we get once a, a project is approved? I'm going to outline a particular project over the Elliott Homes. I, I can't remember the name of the project, the ones at Walnut and Corillian, where the 60-unit parcel, how much, that's all been done, approved, and they are, I think, all the undergrounds in, and they're probably getting ready to start, you know, digging foundation. How much information do we get on the progress of that and, like, when the first phase is going to open and when they project to be built out and those things?
Well, we stay in touch with the Elliott quite a bit and get a good sense of when they're going to build. We do have, if you recall from the budget item that we had go through last week, that development, we expect it to be strong in this upcoming fiscal year, and we have five subdivisions that we're expecting to start construction. Once those subdivisions start getting underway, and typically for us, it's the model home construction, once the model homes get up, we'll do a better job of making sure that we get somewhat of a schedule in the city manager's biweekly, and I'll provide updates on schedules for you, like at, you know, this, at the end of the council meetings. But for Veranda, they are expected to build their model homes probably within the next few months. They had submitted their master plans for building review. I think those are almost ready to go. So once they get those model homes going, they then plan to pull permits in two waves, you know, and really just complete the subdivision. So they plan on doing 30 and 30. It's very possible that they build out in this fiscal year. So I expect that subdivision to go really quick.
That's amazing. I, I just run into neighbors and, and community members over at the community park quite a bit that have questions about, you know, the, the timing of that and what that looks like. And I think, you know, there are a lot of folks excited about that, that particular lot, getting something put on it. And, and so. And, and so, so that's why I ask. And then the last thing I have is more for, I believe, for Mr. Haglund, but, you know, we heard some presentations where the items in the community were funded by the CDBG grants and, and and that kind of stuff, what, what is the status of that and is there any ability to? And I know we just went through the budget, but is there any outside money that we can get to help maybe offset some of those, that lack of funding that we're, we're providing to some of the nonprofits?
Well, I don't know that we have that type of CDBG funding available. Chris, can you briefly describe the, the CDBG funding that we do obtain?
Typically, the CDBG funding that we do get is for, I want to say, improvement projects. We historically have used our CDBG to do sidewalk improvements and old town parking lot improvements. So a lot of it has gone to infrastructure type improvements, we have not had CDBG for nonprofits. And I'm not sure we're eligible for that, CDBG used to be, there used to be a pot of CDBG that was eligible for nonprofits. In fact, I know South County Services used to be a regular recipient of CDBG, but year, a few years ago, the rules changed on, well, at least the portion, I shouldn't, not necessarily the rules, but the portion that SHRA had received really diminished and they pulled back their funds for a lot of those programs. So I think it might be problematic for us to program some of that CDBG for nonprofits, but it's something we can ask. But I, I'm not hopeful.
Okay, yeah, I just, I just asked because I know there are a couple of other jurisdictions around and talking to other council members over the years that they were able to provide money to nonprofits through that, that program. And so, you know, we, we have a lot of good organizations in our community that, that do a lot of good work, as we heard tonight. And, you know, if, if we can, you know, grab some money from somewhere, it'd be nice to be able to pass through, you know, pass that on through to them and, and so they can continue their excellent work. So I appreciate it and, and again, I, I want to thank staff and, and for all the hard work that's been going into the behind-the-scenes things that are happening in this COVID time and, and everybody's doing great work and keep it up.
Thank you, Councilmember Campion.
I have nothing this evening, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Lamson.
I know we're going kind of along here, I just want to thank staff. Looks like things are cranking up for almost every department, we got some signs to put up. Chris has got stuff finally happening, we haven't built a lot of stuff since I've been on council and now it's all, it's been approved, but it's finally starting to happen. So I just appreciate you guys and all your hard work and keeping us informed and all that. So it's exciting to see some things finally getting done, so our kids will have places to move.
Thank you, Councilmember Farmer.
Yeah, just one thing I wanted to kind of highlight here because it was actually in the consent calendar tonight and I was, should have pulled it and I didn't realize, I thought it was a, an agenda item at the end. But, you know, we had a proclamation that we approved in the consent calendar tonight, you know, honoring the Galt High, Galt Union High School District for being named the College Board Advanced Placement District of the Year, which is a pretty big deal. You know, they were selected out of, you know, a, a large number of districts and honored for, you know, their high advanced placement and, and it's, it's, it's a pretty big honor. And so I just wanted to point, highlight that out because it wasn't mentioned and congratulate their school district. I know that our board members are pretty proud of it, so, good job, guys. And to our educators, teachers and, and people involved in our school districts, you know, good job out there. And so with that, that's all I have this evening.
Sorry, Mayor, can I say something on that? I asked, I asked you to do that proclamation for us and we, it would have been great to present it to them. It was a big deal, the people from the AP Board in New York were coming right when COVID hit and they canceled their flights. They were coming to Galt, so maybe the council can go to a school board meeting, as many of us that can, and maybe present the proclamation to the school board when they start having meetings again, if you guys are up for that, sorry.
Councilmember Lamson, I have a question, why, if you be able to make appointment with them and let us know who will be available, they can go with you.
Okay, thank you, I'll check when the meetings and when they, when they have open meetings again, so we can go, thanks, Paul, I mean, boys, thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. And lastly, you know, I will thank you for all the staff, all the department doing the hard work, reaching their goal. Thank you for everybody and congratulations to Tina. And everybody, good night and stay safe.
You too, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good night.